That we expect yet, but I'm going to go ahead and start with the introduction to the remote meeting while we're waiting for some of our friends to join us and then come back to the member access roll call. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends a requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of this meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Arlington School Committee is convening by Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the Novus Agenda dashboard, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus unless I note otherwise. Before we do attendance, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. As a preliminary matter, permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe? I don't see her. Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
In the affirmative.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
And I'm Ms. Morgan. I am also here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dr. Bodie?
Here.
Dr. McNeil?
Here.
Mr. Mason? Mr. Spiegel?
Here.
Ms. Elmer? I don't see her either. And then Ms. Nolan from the AEA is here. You can hear us. Can we just make sure we can hear you?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. And then I see Ms. Franchi is here. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
We can hear you. And Ms. Paretz is here. I'm looking around at my boxes. You can hear us. Can we hear you?
Yes. Hello.
Perfect. Looking to see... Nope, nobody else. Okay. All right. So, we are going to go ahead, because it's 6:35, let me just quickly check in with Dr. Allison Ampe and see if there's... Otherwise, we can go ahead and get started. So, Ms. Fitcher, so the first item on the agenda is public comment. We did receive some emails that were sent to the full committee that are in the packet. There was one email that, when I followed up with the gentleman who sent it, he requested that it be read as public comment, which I will do. So, this is a comment from Mr. David Levy, and his comment is, "The district is currently planning for three potential scenarios for the fall. One, back to normal. Two, partial opening. And three, full remote learning. I also suggest the administration specialize these three scenarios for three distinct student groups. One, elementary. Two, middle school. And three, high school. There may be overlapping strategies between all three, but there are also significant differences in learning capacities, curriculum, and parent oversight." So, that was the only one, as far as I know, that wanted to be read out loud. And I see Dr. Allison Ampe. Can you hear us?
Yes.
And we can hear you. Excellent. Okay, so that's everything that we have for public comment. So, the next item on the agenda is the Fall Reopening Update. Dr. Bodie?
Can you hear me? I wanted to mention that Ms. Elmer is not going to be able to attend tonight. So, with respect to fall planning, there's two parts to this presentation. I'm going to give you an overview of some of the highlights of the call the superintendent has had today with Commissioner Riley, and we have Dr. Susan Frankie here with us, who is our Director of Nursing, and she's going to talk about some of the safety protocols that we have been discussing, will have in place for the fall. So, one of the things that the Commissioner said in his opening remarks was some very good news for Massachusetts in that we are one of only four states in the country that are on track to containing the COVID virus. So, that is very good news as we're sitting here in mid-July. At this point, the Department of Education and the Governor are continuing to encourage the option that as many students as possible are brought back to school in the fall. That is the full reopening, though they couch it with saying as many students as possible to be able to come back. Some districts are going to have space issues, budget issues, that may make that more difficult. There clearly still remains some uncertainties as to what will happen in the fall, and of course, the major one is, should we see a resurgence in Massachusetts? We just really won't know that for a while. But there are other practical and budgetary issues as well. It does not appear that the state budget is going to be completed this summer, as waiting to see what the tax revenues will be and really what kind of pay they will get from the federal government. So, as Mr. Levy mentioned in his public comment, yes, there are three components to a plan for every district. One component is bringing back as many students as possible. The second is a hybrid plan, where you have some students in part of the week or every other week, and other students come the following. They alternate. The third component is the full remote. And the plan for each of these three components needs to be submitted to the Department of Education by July 31st. The Commissioner has asked districts to wait until early August to make some final decisions for the fall, just waiting to see again, to eliminate as many of the possible obstacles that could happen for your plan. In Arlington right now, we're in the stage of actually measuring rooms. The Department of Education has created a calculator, which is help. It's really more of a check on the measuring that goes on. One of the things I think all of our schools are finding is that there's not as much uniformity as you would think between the size of classrooms. So, we're getting a complete grid on what the size of all the classrooms are and how many students they can have in the room using the three-foot distance. The type of grid that we're using is not a rectangular grid. It is a grid in which the desks are on a diagonal, which actually gives more of a sense of space than it would in a rectangular grid. And possibly, in some cases, not all cases, it allows more desks in the room. So, we are at that stage right now, but in parallel to all of that, we are also planning around all three of the options that we're required to give a plan for. And certainly, one of the things that we also are potentially considering is, is there a different plan at different levels? And that is something that we would have to address in our plan if that was the case. So, one of the other things that we learned is that next week, there's going to be a video released, which I will make available on our website to all parents and staff and the school committee, from the medical community on safety issues of reopening. We learned that the transportation guidelines, as they had stated earlier, will be released in August. However, some preliminary guidance is that it'll be three feet apart on the bus, in terms of the number of students that can travel on the bus, and all students, both kindergarten and first grade, will not be... Not that they're exempt right now, but it will be mandatory that all students have a mask on the bus. There will be guidelines in terms of cleaning the bus between runs, and all of that will be coming. But one of the things that was important, I think, for districts that rely on transportation, we're very fortunate in Arlington that the vast majority of our students do not take a bus to school, at least a school bus to school. And that if a district needs to have double runs, there's going to be potentially some give on terms of time and learning hours. As you know, there are two requirements that districts face. One is that we have to complete 180 days in school year, but in addition to that, different levels have to complete certain number of learning hours. At the secondary level, in Arlington, it's 990 hours, and at the elementary, it's 900. But one of the things that the Board of Education in June voted is that if the Governor were to declare a state of emergency, or there were some exigent conditions in terms of the virus or something else that we're not even thinking of, the Commissioner has the ability to modify the school year and to modify time on learning. At this point, there is no modification to the number of school days required, and there's no modification to the number of time and learning hours. In terms of further notices, extracurricular and sports will be coming in a couple weeks. Next week, an FAQ will be on the DCE website. I'll create a link and send it to everybody, and that will be updated regularly. One of the things that actually was something that I had asked this question before, and there's been a modification on the answer, and that is the issue of a remote option. I think that the Department of Education and medical community realize that there are some students who would be... It would be too risky for them to be in school, no matter what in-school model we had, and may need to remain out of school. And that may be true because they live with parents or grandparents that also maybe have fragile medical condition. So, the state recognizing this is allowing districts to have a remote option for students because we are required to provide education for students. There's a lot more that we'll have to look at in terms of this, and that is whether, what the timeframe would be. There's a lot of issues around it, but this is opening the door to that possibility. The other thing that the state is doing is they're also looking into a management, a learning platform that districts can subscribe to for students to engage in learning remotely that would be self-directed. So, that is one possible option for the direction the district can go, but we can also potentially create our own remote learning option, and that's actually something that we are in the process of doing right now. The other thing that the Department of Education also encouraged districts to not do is to do any assessments in the first few weeks of school, and that's a conclusion that we had pretty much come to as well. There has to be really a focus on adjusting back to school and some review, SEL issues. But the Department of Education will be creating some assessments that could be administered later in the first month or early in the second month, that will give us an idea as to where students, where they are in terms of benchmarks. And then there's going to be other guidance that's coming along in terms of sharing the materials. We've already begun talking about that as well. And then mask breaks. We have a little bit more information today. As you remember, last time, we said that they were going to have mask breaks during the day, and the question is, where would they happen and what would be the conditions under which they could happen? And they can't... You have to be six feet apart. So, they're encouraging, of course, outdoors to do a mask break, but if you did it indoors, you have to maintain the six feet. The same thing with eating lunch. If you're taking your mask off, then you have to be six feet apart during lunch. So, that's something that we will be looking at. And then the last thing I'll say before, I'd like to invite Dr. Frankie to talk, is that we still are going to need some more guidance from doctors in the Commonwealth about the safe way, if there's any way, to have band and chorus this coming year. So, that is still a TBD as we go into the next few weeks. So, those are the highlights of today's conversation with the Commissioner, and the plan is that we'll be having weekly meetings from now on. I just don't know which day they will occur. They have been different days over the last few weeks. So, if this is fine with you, Ms. Morgan, I'd like to ask Dr. Frankie to... Let me see if I can see. So, there you are. Dr. Frankie? Could you talk a little bit about the health, safety conditions that we've been putting in place and what we continue to expect to do?
Okay. So, the guidelines came out from the state as to what we're going to need to bring these kids and staff back safely. We're pretty much on target with everything. We've ordered quite a bit of PPE. Some has already come in, such as face shields. We've ordered thousands and thousands of masks, both pediatric and, actually, the PD one just went in today, and adult size, and gloves, gowns, lab coats for the clinicians. I'm trying to think of what else. Gosh, we've ordered so much. In terms of wipes, sanitization wipes, those already came in in the spring. We were really on top of that when everything happened, so we have a decent supply. I'm sure we're going to need more. Just want to look at my notes real quick here. So, we're doing really well in terms of the safety guidelines in the nurse's office. One of the things that we need clearer guidance on and has been posited to the Commissioner, and that is, we were told that there needs to be an isolation room, which is fair and reasonable. There should be. But then, the guidance did state that the room should be separate from the nursing Those conditions would be almost unattenable under the current circumstances in most districts because we have... Most of our nurse's office have a couple of rooms, albeit they're small, but they're fine for isolation purposes. But one has to be triaged in the main nursing suite and then put into... Just like if you were going to a doctor's office, and you're triaged, and sometimes in a small area, and then you're brought into an exam room. Similar, we would be able to provide something like that. But if it's going to have to be separate from the nursing suite, then who's going to watch the kids when they're in a different area? So, that, as I said, has been posited to the Commissioner, who I believe, from what I was told, would give us an answer on that at some point soon, I hope. In the meantime, the rooms that are isolation rooms, they are being refitted with new doors so that they're safer. They have windows in them so that we can see the children because it's not safe to put a child in a room and not be able to see them with the door shut if they're very sick. So, that's PPE. That's isolation rooms. Teacher and staff training will have to be done, and there's a lot written up on that already, but it's not going to go out yet because I fear that there's going to be amendments to that before we start the school year. But that is in place. Look at my notes real quick here. There will need to be amendments and policy amendments, such as related to health and illness, because right now, as it stands, a child only needs to be fever-free for 24 hours before returning to school, and under the circumstances currently, that's really not reasonable. So, my question would be, instead of having to rewrite all the health policies, could we just create an emergency amendment that directs people to CDC and DPH guidelines, which are already in place for the most part? You know, we could have that information available. So, I wonder if we could do that, or do we have to rewrite all the health policies? The research is pretty decent that is coming out, saying that children do not contract this as easily as adults and do not spread it as easily as adults. I will say, though, I do have a little bit of a concern because flu is really bad this year. Prior to us going out after COVID hit, we had quite a bit of influenza type A in the district, and given that this particular pathogen is a little bit more virulent, I do have some concerns about that. So, the policies and the procedures that we put into place have to be somewhat robust and upheld. But I do think that the three-foot distancing, from a scientific perspective, the three-foot distancing is fair and reasonable in the schools. Does anyone have any questions on what I have given so far?
So, I think what we'll do is, once you're done, we'll do a round of questions for you and for Dr. Bodie. Does that make sense? Dr. Bodie, did you have more besides this presentation as part of the Fall Reopening Update?
The only thing I would add, and Ms. Elmer's not here tonight to talk about it, but just today, special education guidelines were released. So, she has said that she would speak to that at the next meeting.
And Dr. Frankie, were you done?
I was, yes.
Great. Great. So, Ms. Exton?
Thank you for the update, and thank you, Dr. Frankie, for being here. It's nice to hear from you about some of the things that have been thought about as well. I'm wondering if there's been any talk about sort of an increase in hand washing stations, just thinking about if classrooms don't have sinks, or can you speak a little bit to that, please?
Right, right. We did look into, I believe it was the Director of Facilities, Jim Feeney. We did talk briefly about portable hand washing stations, especially when kids are coming in and outside in the fall. At the time, he didn't know that that was reasonable. By the way, I apologize. I have guests, and there were children outside my door playing, so if you hear any background noise, my apologies. And the other thing, and this may sound a little odd, is keeping bathroom doors open because we don't want kids actually touching the doors so much, but it's really going to be use of classroom sinks and bathrooms at this juncture. There are no plans at present that I am aware of that include more hand washing stations than what we have.
Oh, let me... Can I add on to that? We have bought a lot of hand sanitizer and stands because at the elementary level, the rooms do have a sink, but at the secondary level, that's not the case. So, we are just going to have to rely primarily at the secondary level on hand sanitizing.
And to add to that, we've already have... The medical orders are already signed and in place for the upcoming year to include use of hand sanitizer. It's actually had to go into the medical orders. We did that before the state gave the guideline, but that was part of the guidelines that came out.
I think that's my only... So, I can ask Dr. Bodie questions about just the other non-health and safety things. Has there been any thinking about what this is going to look like in terms of substitutes? And, you know, maybe I'm trying to get too far ahead, but I'm just thinking about sort of funding for that, or are people going to want to be substitutes?
Well, the answer is yes. We've been thinking about it. We're actually more optimistic this year about the possibility of substitutes. We have a lot of college students that are going to be at home. We know that unfortunately, there's a lot of people who may not have their positions back in the fall. So, I think that there will be a larger pool than we've experienced in the last few years. But there is... We have to make sure that anybody that comes into our school has the training that is necessary, all of the PPE equipment that's necessary, and understand what our protocols are. So, you know, unlike the past years, while we may have more people, we also have... We have to think about how that will happen if somebody's coming in. They just simply can't come in without some preparation for being there.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden?
So, I guess, first a couple comments. So, I'm glad we are working to prepare plans that meet the state guidelines and not trying to second-guess the guidelines that were endorsed by the Massachusetts chapter of the American Association of Pediatrics and also on the national level by the National Association of Pediatrics. I know some of the other districts are... We're not medical experts. The state and the medical associations are, so I'm glad that we are, at least for that plan, that they're asking us to prepare following those guidelines. Now, certainly, the situation in Massachusetts may change, and we may need to be more conservative than three feet, but I'm glad that we are at least looking at what a three feet, and planning for what a three-feet separation rule will allow us to do, and hopefully, if things stay low, we can implement that. The other comment is also about communication. I think, you know, the initial guidelines came out two weeks ago, and I don't think there's been a parent communication from the district yet. So, I know things are still very early, but I think at least saying that we are working to develop these three plans. They're due July 31st. We have a lot of work to do. We will be having, you know, another survey or more opportunities for parent feedback at some point. I don't know if that's going to be in late July or when, but giving the community some sense of, you know, what we're doing and why, and when there will be a chance for community input in a Q and A session. There's lots of questions that are flowing in. You saw some of them in our emails. I know we don't have answers to 99% of those questions, but people need to know that at some point, they're going to have a chance to ask questions and get answers. So, hopefully, we can lay out a plan to do that and communicate it to parents. I guess my only question at this point for Dr. Frankie, actually... I guess my only question at this point for, for Dr. Frankie actually is, for protection of teachers, I didn't see anything in the guidelines specifically about that. I know Dr. Bodie mentioned that there should be, this wasn't in the guideline, this, this six foot fetus, six foot space for the teachers. But I'm wondering if we're looking at, you know, what, what, what we're looking at to protect our teachers? Our teachers, you know, are we giving our teachers face shields and, and, and 95 masks? Or what, how are we going, you know, with this, with six foot separation? What's our protocol for teachers? Or is that still evolving?
Some of it's still evolving. And it's, it's, it's quite interesting because I, you know, I work in the medical community as well. And in my colleagues, when, when we see a patient, we wear a mask and we might wear a lab coat and that's our protection for the most part unless we're in a COVID unit or somewhere where it's higher risk. We're actually going to be protecting the teachers better than we protect some of our own clinicians. So we do have face shields. There was 1,000 ordered. They're usable. They're anti-fog. So that they're a little bit more comfortable. So we do have those. We are looking to demo some larger masks that are see-through and anti-fog. And we, we are, we have masks for the teachers. We're going to advocate that people have their own. I mean, ours are just sort of the general medical masks. So we have those available too. It is not necessary at this juncture to be wearing gloves unless someone is actually touching children, whether it's a speech pathologist or an occupational therapist or, or special ed, but otherwise, the hand sanitizer, which someone asked a question of whether that was as efficient as hand washing, no, it's not, but it's still good. So yes, we plan to protect the teachers as best we can. And in regard to what their comfort level is, I do think that six feet is fair and reasonable to ask them to do that. But similar to, you know, reading the paper from Harvard on school reopening, Harvard School of Public Health, you know, it's going to be a very imperfect situation and we can, we'll do our best. But yes, that is the plan to make sure that the teachers feel comfortable and protected through all of this. And that's actually a great worry of mine too, is I, I want teachers to come back feeling safe, not being nervous about it.
Great, thanks. And my other question for Dr. Bodie is, I know we're still, you know, the, the tools for, for doing the, the classroom seating arrangements are, have recently been released. But do we have any sense at all yet? How, what our capacity is looking at, or is our typical room going to hold 20 kids? Is it going to hold 24? Are we going to have to? You know, I, I understand we have some rooms that are smaller and those may need to be relocated to cafeterias and gyms and whatever and libraries. But for our average room, what, sort of what is the capacity looking like?
Well, like the preliminary information I have received, let's talk about elementary, is that it's looking very positive. Certainly at five of our schools, I haven't gotten the final data from two others that, that we probably are going to be able to manage class sizes so that we, that students can be in the classroom. I, I personally don't like the idea of classrooms being used in the gym to, as an all day, because one of the things that is going to be true in the fall is that you're going to have a cohort of students that you are with all day. And you are, we are going to minimize as much as possible, significantly limit the intermixing of different cohorts of students. So that's something that I want to have a, a very comfortable learning environment for students and staff as we go into this year. So that's something that we're all talking about and considering in these plans as well. The, at the middle school, we're very likely are going to need to hire some more teachers so that we can make sure that the class sizes are such that we, they, they are the number that can be in classrooms. So one of the things that is still not entirely clear is when, if, if students can move to another room. Right now, I, I believe that the guidance on that is no. That students will stay pretty much in their own classroom unless they go to a place where they can do, take their masks off or they go outside for recess. We have to rethink lunch now with the six foot distance. But as a result, we may have extra classrooms that were used for some, another subject that we can create another, say another seventh day, like half seventh, half eighth, and then maybe another half, if not a full cluster at Gibbs. We are looking at that right now. We will, we will be making a decision about that very soon. At the high school, it's, it's a little bit more difficult because you have 1,400 students. So I, I can't really comment on that yet. I, I know they're working very hard to take a look at how they can do it. Because one of the things that is going to be true at the high school is we can't really have them in the same cohort all day. It's just not going to work because students, you can, at any grade level, you can take a course that a senior might be taking. And we're not, we're not thinking of restricting choice on, educationally for students. So that is going to make cohorting a challenge. And so we're, we're looking at options on what we could do there. So I can tell you more as we get over the next week or so.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Allison Napi?
Thank you. So I guess my first question. So my understanding is that our, the states' R value today ticked up above one, which means we are, I mean, just barely by 1.01. But that means that we're no longer under control. It's starting to grow a teeny bit with each case. I'm concerned about that happening at this point and then looking, you know, we haven't even full on gone phase three and what thinking ahead to the fall, what I've been wondering is, what I'd really like is kind of an experiment where we put kids under, in classrooms under the conditions, we're asking everybody to go back to in the fall and see what happens. I understand there's lots of reasons why we can't, I mean, just we put some kids and see if it, see what the infection rate is and things. I understand there's lots of reasons why we can't necessarily do that. But what I'm wondering is, are there any natural experiments happening where this situation is being set up for us? So it doesn't have to be in Massachusetts. It could be in other states. And what's, what are the results happening with these? Right now, the best I, and is someone looking for these things and following them and trying to trace down what's happening? Right now, the best ideas that I have are camps. There's a number of summer camps. And some of them are not reporting good statistics for what's going on. They aren't necessarily following the guidelines to the extent that we are. I mean, that, that are being prescribed, but they also have a lot of time outdoors and stuff. So I'm just wondering who's, who somewhere in the state is gathering data about what's going on, especially with regard to children in a quasi-educational setting? And figuring out what's happening in terms of COVID transmission?
Well, I could try to answer that a little, a little bit. So I, I think they're looking actually at other countries such as Denmark that have gone back. I know there are certain provinces in China that have gone back and then there were some cities that had to pull back out of school again. So I think my understanding is the Department of Public Health is probably looking quite closely at this. That's my hope.
Wait, are they?
Well, that's a there's a, I would like to think so. I, I would like to think so. I know that Mass General came out with a, a paper with a lot of resources. It just came out a few days ago and a lot of studies on it. But anything, I mean, this, as, as you know, doctor, this is in its fledgling state in terms of what we have for research.
I just, I feel like it's not clear who's got a hold of the problem and who's doing something about. And also communicating out and listening to questions like mine as to what's going on. And the thing about the other countries and stuff is that they're doing a better job of tracing and containing and, and all of that. So it doesn't necessarily relate well to us.
I agree with that. They live in different.
I also wish that there's somewhere that school committees can be asking questions for help. I mean, not, you know, I'd like to bump it up over your head to the Department of Health or what. I mean, not, not our Department of Health, but the state. Because I feel like there's so many things that we're not being told, that aren't being communicated. I looked at the Mass General stuff. It's, unless I sit and go through all of the papers, it's not that helpful and it's not clear how closely all these papers apply to our situation. And I'm just, I don't feel like I understand who is really trying hard to do all this. I mean, I, I know that there, there is like groups, but I just, I don't feel like it's being well communicated. And it, it's just not as clear that there's actually a head and stuff. So, okay, so that's one question. And then another question is, from what I understand, the situation that we're talking about, whether it's as many, whether it's option one or option two, this is going to be a very, very different way of teaching than our teachers usually use. Very, very, very different. And I'm wondering, I hope we're already doing, hope we're already doing PD for remote learning and stuff. But it feels to me that this, the option one and option two, when the kids are in school, what are we doing for PD for teachers teaching under these conditions? Because it, it's like the antithesis of what we've been trying to provide to kids. And it's just, I can't even imagine how different, I mean, I can imagine it happening, but I can't imagine the kids staying engaged. I can't imagine the kids staying seated, especially the younger ones. And I, I just, I'm having a hard time with this. So.
Well, you're correct that this is be a very different teaching style than our teachers have been used to and what we've been encouraging and they have gone to school for and have been practicing for many years. We know that. And I think that yes, there's going to be required some training. And in fact, one of the things we have to think about too, and it's, it's a practical thing. But you know, what are evaluations going to look like this year? Because the things that we have looked for are not necessarily going to be the kind of behaviors you would see in a class in terms of group work. We're not going to have group work. One person in a meeting the other day said it's going to look like 1950 again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. The, so there is certainly a recognition of that. And, but the, the bottom line value is that regardless, it's better for students if we can and it's safe to be in school learning than in a remote option, particularly even younger kids because it's so much more difficult. We'll talk about the survey in a few minutes in terms of the feedback we've received on this, this issue. So yes, we, we understand that. And I think it's going to be helpful to teachers when we finally, you know, decide this is what we're going to do. This is, these are going to be the parameters in which you have to teach during the day. And then you, the uncertainty of it, I think, is something that is a little frustrating and for everybody, but it's a process. And the one thing that I said last time, and it's true, is that we, we all have a hard time with uncertainty. But once you can get the final, you can at least start moving toward it. But even in this situation, once we pick a final, a plan to go forward with, it could change and it could change a couple of weeks into school. There's so many, so many possibilities here. But yes, you make a very good point and, and that's, that's accurate.
That's all.
Mr. Thelman?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. Kathy answered actually one of them about intermixing cohorts at the high school and the challenge of that. I think it was Eisenhower who said that, that, that plans are useless, but planning is indispensable when you go into battle. And I, I think, somebody should check the actual quote. Paul can check it. But so I think that it's important to try to bring students back. It's, and teachers back. It's important to have the best plans that we possibly can put together. And it's important for everyone to understand that we're going to be pivoting and changing and modifying the plans as we go along, as Kathy just said. You know, if you read about, and I don't, I don't mean to make a, I don't mean to make a comparison between an ICU unit and a, a school. But if you look at all the COVID precautions that were put in place back in February, March in hospitals, they've now been modified tremendously over the past several months. Because OR heads and ICU heads across the country shared best practices. People in the field found out better ways to do things. And I think there's a value, and I don't want, I don't want to experiment with kids, but I think there's a value in trying something, being as careful and cautious as we have, having a plan, having everybody understand the plan will be modified and changed as we move along. And then having educators gather and share what they've experienced. Well, we did this this day. We did, I can teach without the mask. I can't teach without the mask. I'm able to keep the fourth graders mask on for so many hours, but not more than 45 minutes at a time or more than 38 minutes at a time. I don't know. But over time, we've got to try these things and we've got to be willing to modify. And, you know, I think we have, I think we have to be able to live with that and we have to expect the district will do the very best it can to create a plan that will be followed, understanding that it will be modified and there has to be built into the program, that it has to be built into, into the practice of the teachers. And there has to be time for this, for sharing of best practices, time to give feedback, time to talk about what educators have learned about how to do this model. So that's, I'm going to preface it by that, by saying that. The I guess I heard, am I to understand that in all likelihood, we will not have gym classes in the fall? Or that's not clarified yet?
No, I don't think that, that, that would be a conclusion you would necessarily have. There could be classes outside. Of course, that's limited to good weather. They're in the gym, they have, and doing any kind of activity. And, and we're going to have to limit the kinds of activities, just like there's going to potentially be a limit on what types of sports can be played. Currently, this summer, some sports are okay, some are not. You can have practices with ice hockey, but you can't have games. You can have tennis, but you, you can't have basketball, those kinds of things. It depends on the contact. It depends on the potential for, you know, particle projection. So it could be that gym would be a little bit, PE would be a little bit different this year, and that's going to take some planning as well. But no, we, I, I think that at all levels, our students want to participate in something. But it, but some things won't be as possible.
My, my other question is, or maybe this is for Sue, or, you know, like what's the thinking been or the conversations been about what happens if a child or a teacher contracts COVID? How is that? What, what are the, what are the options? I mean, because if, does it mean, yeah, so I'm just curious to know.
No, no, it's a. No, no, it's a good question. And so it's a tight protocol. It'll probably be very similar to what we've done before, although with the research, it might be modified a bit, a little bit. So it, it, it depends which building it is, elementary versus high school, of course. But if a child, let's say, gets a positive diagnosis, then we're looking at, you know, having those kids quarant, possibly quarantined for two weeks as well as the teacher or teachers. I'm not sure that the protocol that the Board of Health put out or the DPH put out will be changed that much in relation to quarantining and isolation. And then it's cleaning the classrooms. Anything on a larger scale in terms of the building, I, I, I can't speak on that at this point. But it's going to be very similar protocols. There's also self-certification protocols in, in place now for summer. Uh, and there will be both for students and for teachers and saying, I don't have a fever. I haven't been around anyone with COVID. I don't have any symptoms, et cetera, et cetera. So those things are already in place and they'll be tweaked a little bit more, but they're, they're pretty robust now. So, yeah, it, it'll be pretty similar.
And do you, I mean, so the, and I, and I get how it can work at an elementary school. You know, we did it already with one of the schools and so we kind of, I understand that. The question is at the high school. When you have, I mean, if you have a student who is in multiple classes, multiple levels interfacing with students all over the building, I, I just, I'm just curious. I mean, I, what's the thinking been so far?
Well, the, the, actually, the commissioner addressed that a little bit today by just simply saying you're going to get more guidelines in August. Because it's, as you said, it's evolving and, and it probably will even once we're back in school as well. So, yes, they're planning to give us that information and we'll follow those protocols. But you're right, high school presents a challenging situation if we're going to allow kids to take the courses that they've chosen. And that's the plan currently. But yes, that, that is an issue of how we do the contact tracing. And we're talking about such a large number of students, but what the consequences will be.
My last question relates to the high school as well. Would, would you consider reducing the number of electives and course offerings? Is that something you, would that happen? Is that, is that on the?
That actually is going to happen somewhat. Already, there's a, there's been a practice in many courses in every department that you can choose which way, if you want to take it for honors level, you want to take it for curriculum A level. And you sign an agreement as to the work that you would do to get the honors level. So I think that we'll see a little bit more collapsing of that exactly in that way, just again, a little bit more minimizing. I'm not sure it's going to happen in every course, but I think it depends on the numbers that, again, it's, it's the high school schedule and the sections determined by student choices. So it may not be practical to collapse it that way. But yes, that's kind of thinking is going on.
And then final question, I'm sorry, Jane, I want to say this, last question. You're, if I want to make sure I understand Jeff Riley's, the commissioner's position. And that is that it is possible to have, um, parallel remote instruction taking place. So some parents could opt for parallel remote instruction while other children, while other parents opt to have their kids in school.
That's correct.
Okay, so he's now in favor of that?
Yes, I think that the number of students that might have fragile, fragile conditions themselves or in their family, the reality of that is that we have to be able to provide an education for those students. As I said, the state may go to a learning management service that we could do a subscription for. But, uh, I think collectively in our district, we would like to do our own.
Okay, good. Some parents may just opt for that option, but it may, may not be for health reasons. It may be just for, because they're in uncertainty and being uncomfortable with the protocols that are in place. So that may happen. Would you, so there's limited enforceability? If somebody says, or you're going to.
Yeah, I, I think that that, that will be, that will be very difficult to determine unless we require some kind of, um, doctor's, we put on a doctor's note, but, um, we haven't gotten that far yet. I, I think today, we, we've been thinking about this as an option. And in fact, we could talk about the survey results and we're going to have to, we're going to have to resurvey people. Once, once we know what we think the plan is, we have to then resurvey and see where people stand. Because I think it's important for, for, for the parents to know this. But I think absent, this is what we're planning in the fall. I, I'm not, I, I think this is not going to work for my family. I will say that right now, what we are doing in district is trying to develop a plan where as many students and can come back to school in the fall. We are, we, we're developing a hybrid plan, but our efforts are really more toward the students coming back. At this point, we will also have a remote plan, but I don't, I don't see necessarily, it could happen that we would have to delay the start of school and everybody and be in a remote situation. It's just hard to know. I think the more likely possibility is that we start and we have to go into remote. We need to be prepared. And that's one of the reasons why I think the remote option is a good option because we are going to have really strong coherency between our classrooms in the district and the remote. And the remote, remote's not going to be like the remote we had last year. It's going to be much more synchronous.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Jane.
Did we lose Jane?
We did.
So I get promoted for, I get promoted for a couple of seconds? Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, first of all, as a point of order, we've got somebody using the Q and A or the chat feature. Uh, and I just want to emphasize to people who were attendees that this meeting is subject to the open meeting law, so we can't go there, look at it or respond to chats or questions that are coming in electronically outside the meeting. This is, I, I, look. First of all, we do know that there are going to be school districts in the United States that are opening sometime in, in August. So we should have some kind of data available to us from what's happening elsewhere in, in the nation. Although the problem that I'm seeing right now is this has become so politicized that i- it's tough to trust anyone's data because you've got folks who are either absolutely dedicated to opening school under no cir, under any circumstance. And then some folks who think that we should just keep it closed until we have a vaccine. And, uh, I, I want to make a scientifically based decision and not a, a, a political one. And it's difficult if we don't have a reliable source of information about what's going on. It's particularly disturbing to see the, the huge spike in cases elsewhere in the nation. Uh, and because we do have the capacity to move around the United States, this could be back here without us knowing it for a couple of weeks as, as we're starting school. So I'm, I'm very, very anxious and nervous about how we move forward. Dr. Bodie, first of all, you said we're going to get a video from the medical community. Who, who is this medical community and, and what should we be anticipating?
I don't have a lot of details on that. I think it's from the Pediatric Association, maybe from researchers. I, I don't know. We just know basically what I told you.
Okay. Secondly, I've seen an email, people who might opt to not register for school and withdraw for homeschooling for the year. And I would urge people not to do that. And, and I hope that we as a district would put out that kind of a message as our enrollment in the 2020, 21 school year, particularly on October 1, is the defining factor for our chapter 78 and the 2021, 22 school year. And if we have a drop off in students this year, we will have a drop off in funding for next year. And that, I think the message that we need to send out and, and send it out strong is that we will be there and support students in, uh, regardless of whether or not they feel safe coming into the buildings in, in September. And we need them to register, we need them to participate with us and we, we want to be there together as a community. My next question is definitely in terms of funding. We, we are spending a lot of money on modifications and supplies. Where do we stand in terms of that element to the funding? Notwithstanding the chapter 78 money that has not been determined up to this point?
Where do we stand with respect to the budget to fund the, the extra costs we incur? Is that, is that your question?
Yeah, basically, how are we paying for this stuff, for all the extra things that we need to buy and do? And how much of this is being reimbursed and, and how much of this is being a burden right now?
I'm going to put Mr. Mason on the spot in a second, but let me just say, um, that, that the money that comes in through the COVID, uh, that we have submitted, we submitted documented evidence in June and it's another, there's another opportunity in August. A lot of the technology that we bought and some of this PPE that we're buying can be funded through that. Now, that money, however, cannot be used for any kind of salaries.
So I would, let, let me make a pause here is because this is a, going to be an ongoing problem and this is going to be something updated on a regular basis. It doesn't have to be a big report, a one pager of how much extra we're spending, what we anticipate spending, how much we have applied for and how much we've received. A very simple one pager for every meeting of sort of a COVID financial report would be very helpful because I think that we really need to keep track of this. Because what's obvious is, is we've got federal and state officials telling us that we need to reopen, but they're not putting the money behind it. And until we have a commitment of full funding, uh, I, I, I think that we've got to push back on, on mandates as well.
One, one glimmer with, that I think is very positive with respect to this is that the money that was, that came through COVID, as I said, were really for things. But the money that is coming now from that $193 million, which will be pretty much, I wouldn't say it's entitlement, but we're going to be applying for it, the, the template will come out next week, is about $225 per student. So for Arlington, it's a little over 1.3 million. That kind of money can be used for salaries. So we can do that is to provide that information. In fact, we, we have it because we have to submit that information as part of a reimbursement plan. And Mr. Mason, do you want to say something more about that?
Um, yeah, I can, uh, briefly add on, I think you covered a, a good portion of it. But, um, yeah, the, the funds that, that will come in for the grant will definitely be, can be used for more than the flexibility that we had with the CARES funding that we had the deadline in FY, with FY 20 expenditures. So many of the expenditures that you've, we've talked about already, that's including the PPE supplies, all of the remote learning and computer purchases that were, have been required up to this point. And even the software that we're using right now to host this meeting has been covered under a COVID submission in COVID funds that will be reimbursed to the town. And most of those expenditures will come off of the current expend, uh, budget that we did last year as a return back to the town. Going forward, we, we do have some additional funds from Esther that's going to be used for planning and other things. But mainly, this is, uh, the expenditures, expenditures going forward will be able to then be applied again for similar funding that we did it under last year or a couple, couple of weeks ago, shall I say. And, um, that should be able to hopefully cover a decent portion of the expenditures that we are incurring, that we will incur.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, this is also a moving target. And rather than getting an oral report, because I'm going to ask this question at every meeting we have. But rather than getting an oral report and having to go and figure out and take notes and I, I'd like a one pager that basically says what category of funding might we get? What have we applied for, what do we, we think we're going to get, just so we know what the status is. I, I think it's important because we're going to be asked to make policy decisions down the road. And a lot of the policy decisions are going to be based on how much money we have and what we can afford to do. And so having this information in our hands as we go through meetings is, is really an important, important part of, of what we're doing. The other que, I have a, a question and a statement. I'll get the statement out of the way, then I'll ask the question so I can mute myself. The statement is, I also hope we are not eliminating, uh, electives at the high school. Because those are the kind of courses that we can even more effectively do i- in a hybrid or remote faction. I do not want to lose programming. Uh, and if it requires, uh, adjustments in the way we deliver in order to make sure the programming is offered, I want to do that rather than trying to be in some sort of an orthodoxy in terms of, of, of how we're delivering and accounting to the state. And the other question is, when this whole thing broke, it was pretty obvious, although we didn't have the data in front of us. I'm not an epidemiologist, I'm not on the Board of Health. But it's obvious the fact that we had the Biogen Conference is an entry point for COVID into the region. We have Biogen employees in, in Arlington and we started to see cases before we closed. The, I, I understand that the number of cases and the experiences we were having in town was an important part of the superintendent's decision to align with other super, neighboring superintendents to close down before the governor, uh, moved on the issue. I, I think the people I would trust the most i- i- are the local Arlington Board of Health, Arlington Health officials in concert with health officials in surrounding towns. So we know exactly where we stand in our community with regard to the virus. And I hope that without breaking any kind of confidentiality, that when we are asked to make decisions, that we'll be doing it in a data informed basis. And that's sort of where I'm going to leave it with the question of, you know, how are we tracking things and communicating with this local Board of Health?
Um, I meet every day with the Board of Health and Arlington leadership. We have a standing meeting. And, uh, we, we talk about all of the, the cases that are coming through. That, that is tracked on the state system. And, uh, our Arlington Board of Health, people should be very reassured what a confident group of people these, these are. They do contact tracing for this, for the cases. When, when someone, when someone tests positive for COVID, that gets reported to the state that goes on the, the state, uh, system. So they're very much aware. Now, are there people that have COVID that are not getting tested? Yes, but, and so those people would not be on, on the state system. But right now Arlington has pretty, pretty much flat. And in fact, on the town website, they keep a run, they keep all of that data there for everybody to see. But we do, in fact, you know, I bring up questions, uh, that, that we need to answer. And they're, they're very much going to be, uh, part of the consulting team as we go through our, our process over the next, well, this is going to go on for months, not just the next six weeks.
Yeah, I, I really have a lot of faith in the Arlington Health, Board of Health and, and the folks who work on the town side. Uh, and I probably have more faith in them than any other source that I could take a look at right now. It's just all important that we are communicated with where appropriate because people ask us questions as well. Thank you.
Mr. Heiner?
First off, I'd like to ask Ms. Morgan to please stay here. You caused palpitations running away. I wasn't prepared. I'd like to thank Dr. Bodie and the entire staff for a phenomenal job you're doing. Dr. Frankie especially, um, during these. Frankie especially, during these strange conditions. I had a couple of requests, most of my questions got answered by earlier. I'd like to request at least a rough draft of what you're going to be presenting to the state for the next school committee meeting ahead of time for us to just take a look at it, what's going forward. Doesn't have to be the final, just a rough draft. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, did I hear you say that the state has sent out preliminary guidelines for special education, Dr. Bodie?
They're not, they, they sent them out today. I even had a chance to look at them, but they, but they'll also be on the DESSY website. I can, I can send you the link.
Would you send us the link and just put it on the school committee? Because I've had a lot of parents asking that, and I think it'll ally a lot of fears or take care of a lot of questions ahead of time. Thank you. That's it for me.
So I had just one comment, and I'm glad that Ms. Perritz is here, because she can potentially relay my comments directly to the principal team. I, you know, that, the piece that makes me the most nervous about return to school is that some of the experiences and some of the stumbling blocks that I've had, especially in our elementary schools around getting kids out to recess and hand washing, and how they just can't wash their hands before they go to lunch, and a lot of things that have been really like rigid and very difficult to work with, and have required just extraordinary parent outrage, anger, upset advocacy, and have taken a really long time to sort of turn the corner on, are things that we're really going to need to be responsive to when we go back to school in this kind of an environment. And given the experience that I've had in elementary school with my kids, I, I am not totally confident about that. I don't, I don't feel great about it, because, you know, it's, it's, it's real reasonable to have a six-year-old wash their hands before they eat lunch. Like, it's just, it is not an unreasonable thing to do, and, and we've always been told, oh, well, it's just not possible, and just can't get the kids through, or they don't do a good job, or da, 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 da. And, and I guess I've heard, I mean, I've had a kid in elementary school for like nine years, maybe, long time, and I've heard the same tune, oh, recess, it's hard, they can't get their shoes on, or oh, if there's a little bit of rain, and all this kind of carry-on. And I, I just really feel like this, this is the year where I'm hoping we're going to turn the corner on some of that, because it seems like it's so important. If being outside, we know is the safest, you know, is one of the safest places for kids to be, we really need to prioritize that. I'm really, really hoping that, that it's going to be a different experience. I, like, we've got to have kids washing their hands before lunch. Hand sanitizer is like, it's, I guess, we got to use it, maybe when they come in in the morning, et cetera, but like, we've got to get kids washing their hands, and, and I really think it's something that if we train them to do it, it's, you know, they're, they're going to be able to get through those lines, and I, I hope that we can just hit, you know, hit the ground running on some of those things, so that these don't become like protracted battles, especially at the elementary school level. And we've certainly experienced that, I have for many years. So the other piece, the other question, Dr. Bodie, I guess for you, and I, appreciating that I, I don't think that there's an answer to this at this point, but I guess it's feedback from the community. I get a lot of questions about after-school, right? Understandably, whether or not after-school. So I guess, maybe the question that you might know the answer to is whether or not after-school programs, be them the Arlington School Program or private programs that are using our buildings, are they required to adhere to the same guidelines that DESSY has put out, or do we not know? Or no?
They absolutely are going to be subject to the same guidelines, and I've already begun talking with our, our Director of After-School Programming, Todd Morris. They have a lot of planning, because it means rethinking what after-school is going to be like. Again, we, going back to the idea of a cohort, and the question of how much movement there is going to be possible. But I think that the other issue is, you know, the, the students are going to have to be in classrooms more than, more than likely. And so we are going to have to get protocols for cleaning classrooms, so that the students that come back the next day have a room that has been sanitized. So there's a lot of planning that needs to go on that, but I, I think that parents would like to have the after-school program continue, and that is certainly what we are working toward doing, and working with them what those guidelines will be. So right now, Mr. Morris is part of our steering committee, and he is privy to all we're talking about. We will be giving guidelines to the, the private after-school programs that they must adhere to.
Great, thank you. And I think a recognition that potentially some of our, you know, that, that we could see differences, but we, we have always had differences between our privately-run programs and those programs that have been part of the, you know, the district-run Arlington After-School Program. You know, I, I, it's definitely something that I'm worried about. I don't know if some of our private programs, you know, financial structure is going to support them being able to adhere to the guidelines that I fully support, we, we pulled them to, right? And so that's definitely, you know, I think that's, it's definitely a concern, and, and I think, you know, after-school is really important, and, but it, it's a different, it's, you know, it's different than the school day, right? So.
It won't be an option.
It, pardon?
It will not be an option.
It will not be an option to not follow the guidance. Correct. Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. Um, okay, so the next, so that's, that's it for reopening. Was there anything that we missed as we went through?
I, I will give you a list of these, these highlights, but to Mr. Carden's earlier comment, yes, we've been talking about, we need to get weekly communications going out to parents. It's just been not known where we were actually heading, but definitely that is the direction we're going. And as I said, once we have a plan, we're going to have to resurvey parents, and then there will have to be a period of time where we have some kind of definitive, survey is one thing, then a definitive choice. So we will, it's not really a choice, it's, it really has, will have conditions with it in terms of, we know that, we know medical fragility or riskiness is an issue.
Thank you. So the next item is the parent survey results, Dr. McNeil and Dr. Bodie. And actually, before we start, I want to thank Dr. McNeil and Ms. Fitzgerald for providing us with the, the information from the survey. I think it was as early as, it was yesterday, maybe yesterday morning, felt like a long time, which was great, really helpful to be able to see that and click through it. And it was really helpful for me in being able to see it, and then I'm, I'm really interested to hear what you have to say. So thank you very much.
Well, we're going to do this together, but I'm going to let Dr. McNeil start, and I want to thank him too, in terms of all the work that he's done on, on the survey, and looking at all the responses. I'll let him talk a little bit about that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bodie. I'm going to, do I have the permissions to share my screen, so that we can display the dashboard? I'll go ahead and try. I think I do, I do. So please let me know if you see my, you're able to see my screen.
Can everybody see? Yeah, I can see it.
Perfect. So yes, thank you for that compliment, Ms. Morgan. It, it was actually, you know, I really actually enjoyed going through the survey, because it gave me an opportunity to really understand what parents were thinking, and, you know, their experiences as it, as it related to this last spring, and then being able to see, you know, some of the things that they're thinking about as we move forward with fall planning. I will go over the different parts of the survey, and then I'm, I'm just going to focus on various questions that had to deal with the curriculum and instruction, and, you know, exactly what I just said about parents, parents and their experience with the remote learning plan that we had in place over the spring. But, so right up here at the top of the survey, you can see the, the percentage, and if you hover, you know, as I hover my cursor over each one of the pie slices, you can see the percentage, as well as the actual number of, you know, that divides up, you know, the parents who responded to the survey. So you can see, you know, the proportionality of, of, you know, who was responding. And so on the left-hand side, you'll see the schools, and on the right-hand side, you'll see the grades. So we had, you know, the actual prompts and questions are right here, and you can see how the people, the different respondents replied. So I'm just going to jump down here to minimize this over here. I'm going to jump down here to some of the questions that related, you know, to the experiences that parents had over the spring. So things that I focused on, and what I wanted to highlight for the meeting here, was looking at the actual instruction, if you will. So different questions and prompts that, you know, had to deal with that. For instance, here, the work my child has been getting through remote learning is manageable for me as a parent to support. And so as I looked at this question, and I saw, you know, the number of people who answered yes and no, I also disaggregated the data to see, you know, what grades are represented here, and how they responded, and what is the percentage? So it was the lower grades, actually, I was, I was quite, you know, pleased with the answer to this question, because, you know, we had, the majority of the people said yes, the work was manageable. However, I was concerned about the percentage of individuals that said no. So I disaggregated that data, and the majority of the people who answered no had students that were in the earlier grades. And I can understand that, because that also correlated with the open responses, where parents were sharing their experience and saying that, you know, they had to support their students in kindergarten, first and second grade, because of the way that the remote learning plan was set up. And so we were using the grids to push out content and the Google Classroom, so they were saying that definitely it was very difficult balancing their work-life with also having the increased responsibility for their students' educational development. So I can understand that. And then going over here, looking at how many hours a day, I was looking at that, and, you know, looking at the majority of the people answered one to two hours, so we had a certain percentage of individuals that were saying that they had three and a half hours or more, and, and our target was to have at least three hours of instruction every, you know, learning activities every day that the students would be engaged in. So I know that we need to do some work here, and I understand that. So looking, moving along, you know, looking at the other prompts, and looking at whether or not children were able to complete their work without help from an adult or a family member. Again, you know, I was looking at the responses, and I was just definitely concerned about the people who answered no, never, and we had quite a few of them. And then we were trending, you know, lower here at some times to never. So I was, I disaggregated the data once again, and, you know, definitely looking at the percentage of individuals, we were trending, those parents were trending who had kids at the lower grades. So the trend was, the parents at the lower grades were feeling more of the frustration, as you could probably imagine, because they had to support their students. And then looking over here, and then, so we're going to go to the next page, and then we're going to look at some questions and prompts there. Again, you have the pie charts here at the top, and then as you scroll down, I was also looking at, over here, where we're looking at how parents responded to whether or not they had a positive experience with the remote learning plan. And again, we were trending towards disagree and slightly agree. I disaggregated the data for the disagree. And again, we're looking at the parents who were trending, who had kids at the lower, lower grades. So I know that the brunt of the responsibility for maintaining the educational plan, you know, you know, were parents at the lower grades, and was, you know, very difficult. And I also.
Ms. McNeil, can I just interrupt you just for a point of clarification as we're talking about this, so that we all understand? There are a lot of responses that are like, always, comma, often, always, comma, never. There was one person, can you just, just, I, I'm so distracted by those, I just, could you, do you know what that means?
Yes, I do. So there was a flaw that, you know, as, as always, you look for the certain flaws in surveys. So on this particular survey, we used a Google form to collect the information. And I knew going into it, it was going to be a problem, because we hadn't utilized this on a previous survey. So parents were, the main questions, the main, I guess, checkboxes that they were supposed to select were, for some of these, and I will go up here, for instance, from, on, on this question right here, my child's teachers have been supportive with helping my child complete their assignments. They were supposed to select always, often, sometimes, or never. So sometimes, you know, when people were selecting the different checkboxes on this particular prompt, on these type of prompts, they were selecting two. So I don't know if they were thinking about, for some, for some of my children, I have to provide some support, but then some of other children that I have in the same household, I'm sorry, some of my children are receiving very, you know, great support, or getting support from their teachers, and then some of my children are not getting any support from their children, I mean, for their children. So that's what I'm thinking, is how they, you know, interpreted this question and how they respond. That is something I have to think about, how we can solve that moving forward, so that we can get more clean data. But you're all looking at raw data, and I wanted to be transparent, that is why I kept it in, in here. So, you know, I didn't want to clean it up, because I didn't want to give the impression that I was trying to somehow make, you know, make the survey biased towards a certain way. So I left it in.
I totally appreciate that. I just want to make sure we all understand it. The other one, the other piece that I don't understand is the last line, doesn't, okay.
So this line, thank you for these questions, very good questions. These are the, so not everyone answered every question. So the last line, where you have nothing there, these are people that just did not respond to this question. So if you add up all the individuals who responded and selected something, so we had 2,782 responses to the survey, if you subtract the 95 people here, you'll get the number of people who actually respond, gave a response. These are the individuals that did not respond. And you could see at the bottom, the line at the, at the bottom on some of the prompts, it varies. So not everybody responded to every prompt.
Perfect, got it. I'm with you now. Thank you so much. Carry on.
No worries. So again, looking at this question about, you know, how supportive were teachers doing the remote learning plan? You know, I was definitely concerned about, you know, looking at never and looking at sometimes, so I disaggregated the data, and in order to determine, you know, what population of parents were selecting that. So again, looking at the lower elementary, you know, parents who had kids in the lower elementary grades, they tended to, you know, the, the data tended to skew to never, sometimes. And so I, I think, you know, I'm feeling their frustration, and I understand where they're coming from with that. So that, those are different points that we are going to focus on as we move forward. And then, I don't want to run on too long, but I also looked at the questions down here, and just, again, went through, really, you know, tried to understand what the parents were telling me through the survey, and just looking over here, you know, looking at whether or not the child's remote learning experience was positive, you know, looking at the flexibility of the different assignments that we were, or the, the videos that we were offering, like, you know, asynchronous versus synchronous. And then, you know, looking at the quality of instruction, again, parents were, you know, with the kids who had, who had kids in lower grades tended to not really feel that they were getting, the instructional quality wasn't where we wanted it to be. And then looking at engagement, that is something else that I was really focusing on, to make sure that I was really understanding where we need to really focus our efforts, and definitely looking at trying to make the remote learning experience and assignments more engaging. I know that it's something that we need to focus on. So I'm going to stop right there, because I don't want to go on. I did, I did go through the open responses, but I'm going to allow, you know, ask Dr. Bodie if she wants to interject anything right here, and then I can, I can talk about the open responses moving forward a little, as we, as we go through the survey a little bit more.
I don't know if people want to ask.
I don't know if people want to ask questions about this part because the survey was in two parts. It was the experience from May fourth, uh, through the end of the school year. And then we looked, looked ahead at planning for the fall. Do you want to just go-
Let's do the whole, let's do all of your pieces and then, um, we can do questions on, on both parts, I think makes the most sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want me to finish with the open responses? I can just finish there. I just, I just want to say that I understand what I got from the survey about the quality of instruction, engagement, looking, eh, eh, we tended to trend, like I said before, the, the parents who had kids in the lower grades, they were the ones that were, that are answering in a more negative fashion about their experience. And so that is something that I, I, I'm just understanding and I know that that's something we need to focus on. So I don't know, Dr. Bodie, do you want me to talk about the open responses or do you want to talk about the fall planning?
Um, well, you could talk a little bit about the open responses, the, the, just the, the number. We had well over two thousand responses.
Okay, so-
You, uh, organizing in groups.
Right. So I will go through the, and, and so what I want to, I want everyone to understand, like, the different sections of the survey. So this is page two. We couldn't fit all the prompts and questions onto one page. Then again, as you, as you go, as you advance, you can click up here on the arrow and you can advance to the different pages on the dashboard. The last page is where we had our open responses. And so this is where I spent a lot of, you know, a lot of my time, uh, trying to understand what parents were trying to tell us and communicate to us. So we had two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven open responses. Yes, I read every last one of them. And what I wanted to do is I wanted to understand what the themes were. So, and I'm glad that I did that. So I, I looked for themes and I coded the responses. So I just want to go through the codes. Right here, if a, a response was, you know, emphasizing the need for childcare in the fall, I labeled it, I put it under childcare. If parents want us to have kind of like a à la carte and different models that they can choose from, different plans that they can choose from that best fits their situation, I coded it as choice. If it was a comment that really didn't have a focus, I put, just put comments like miscellaneous, so I could go back and read. And then I made notes, I, I, I wrote notes on those comments as well. If we got a compliment and people were satisfied with their spring learning, I mean, remote learning experience, I labeled it as compliment. If parents were saying like, I don't care what plan you use, but just make sure it's a consistent plan that stays the same throughout the year, I labeled it as consistent plan. If parents emphasized, you know what, we want to have a full-time schedule, kids back in school, I labeled it as full-time school. If parents stressed the health and safety of their children and staff and of the adults over everything else, I labeled it as health and safety. If parents wanted a hybrid model and they said, that's the, that's what we want, I labeled it as hybrid. I labeled it as remote learning not effective. And those are the parents that said, you know what, the experience that we had over the spring was not effective. My kids didn't get anything out of it. This is where we need to focus our attention. If parents labeled it, I mean, if parents, uh, had a theme in their response where we were talking about, we want to have a remote learning option and nothing else, then I, 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 I labeled it as remote learning option. And if parents stressed the SEL, they want us to really focus on providing their kids with, you know, the, the thing that they missed the most was about the peer interaction. And it was like really having a negative effect on their ki, the social emotional wellbeing of their children. I labeled it as SEL. And then parents that were saying, you know what, we're okay with a hybrid plan or remote learning option. And if you do that, we need to have more structured classes and we need to have more synchronized instruction from the teachers. So you can see what the percentage is and the actual numbers of, to the responses. And I will do a, I will give a caveat, like, this is based upon, as any researcher will tell you, there's some bias there, I'm sure. Somebody might look at a response and label it a different way. So I definitely want to put that out there and as, and as you, as everybody's done any type of research and you, and you had decoded various, uh, responses and through a qualitative, uh, you know, research survey, you know that that is one of the limitations that there is the bias of the researcher. So I will, you know, um, admit to that. But this is where, uh, I landed with the different codes. I didn't want to have too many codes, but I definitely wanted to make sure I got the essence of what everybody was trying to tell us. So I'll stop right there.
So could you move it down to the, uh, fall planning?
Yes, I will go back to those pages, yes. So here, we'll, we'll have on, on page two of the dashboard, you'll see where the questions begin about fall planning.
One of the things we were very interested in learning, of course, as we've moving forward, as we were talking earlier this evening is, you know, where are our parents in terms of what their thinking is right now, uh, for the fall? So the first, can you just move it down a little bit so we can see that question?
Is it, how's that? More? Am I going the wrong way?
Yeah, you're going, uh, I think the wrong way, yeah.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's actually right there, begins with, okay.
Right.
So if the Arlington schools begin with a regular schedule in the fall, I'm likely to send my child to school. So in that, in that scenario, just looking at the strongly or agree or agree, uh, we're looking at, um, about seventy-six percent of our, of our families are saying that. Now, that's in a very abstraction without even knowing what the plan would, would, what the safety precautions would be or what the plan would be. Um, when you look at a hybrid, interestingly, that number was a little bit higher, about eighty percent of the strongly agree and they agree. Um, are you concerned about childcare if we open with a remote or hybrid schedule? And nearly half, about forty-five percent said they agree or strongly agree. I did not take into consideration the multiple answers that people may have given. Um, interestingly, the next, another question about whether you think that your child has enough space uh, for social distancing, just slightly over fifty percent, fifty-three percent thought that strongly agreed or agreed that schools would have this. Would stu, there's a one thing to have the distancing and the other is, will, you, you think students would actually, uh, maintain the safety protocols of social distancing, avoiding physical contact? And about only twenty-eight percent, under thirty percent, thought that they strongly agreed or agreed on that. So that, that's something that we certainly are going to have to be working on with our students and training them in the protocols that they have to, um, abide by for everybody's safety. So one of the other questions we wanted to take a look at was the question, if we offered a remote, I think we need to, we offered a remote, um, option because there was a, a riskiness with the child's medical condition or just, you know, there was riskiness that would, uh, be a problem in their family. What we found is that, um, in terms of likely or very likely, um, that they would choose it, uh, about twenty-seven percent would choose it with alternating days. About twenty-five percent didn't really change, well, it was alternating weeks. And then if you compare it to whether they would choose a remote if it was a regular school day, uh, the, the percentage jumped up to about thirty-three percent. So we have somewhere of, of the quarter of the families that, that took this survey, are, would be very interested in a remote option, should that be, um, offered to them. The thing is, this was represented about twenty-eight hundred respondents. The survey went out to sixty-eight hundred email addresses. So we had a, a little over forty percent, forty-one percent, uh, return rate, which is actually very good, uh, for surveys. So as I said, we're going to have to do this again as we, uh, we have a more firm plan just to get, uh, a, a better sense of where families are going to be. But that's, that's the result. And we were able, as, as Dr. McNeil was talking about, actually dig very deeply into this by grade level in school, uh, just to get a better sense of where people stand on this. Not, but those are the highlights of the survey. Does anyone have any questions about this or comments?
Um, Ms. Exton. Um, thank you for, um, the survey and for all of the, sharing all of it and in detail. Um, I have two questions. One, and maybe you mentioned this and I missed it. Um, when you separated out the comments, Dr. McNeil, could, were you able, like, some comments might have been about more than one thing. Did you, you could divvy them into those? I was trying to do the math of the comments and how many responded? Or was it a comment went to one, um, topic?
Oh, so that's a very good question. So, uh, yeah, so it was a one-to-one correlation. So as I had the codes, I just, I read a response and I said, where does this fall under these codes? And you have to actually read the comments over more than one time, to be honest with you, really to understand and be, you know, very secure, like, okay, I read that correctly and then this is going to be coded this way. So it was like, you know, there was, if you go, I'll go back and share the screen, uh, so you can see the survey. So you'll be able to see the number over here. You'll see, on the right-hand side, you'll see health and safety. So there were four hundred and eighty comments that prioritize the health and safety of the parents and students. And let me just give you the essence of that. They were saying, whatever you decide, please use the science in order to lead your decision. Don't worry about anything else. We want you to worry about the health and safety of the adults and the children and let that be the priority as you make your decisions.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, um, if they said something about health and safety, but then they also said something about they were worried about social and emotional learning, did you, did health and safety get a tick box and social emotional learning or you kind of?
No, that's a very good question. I tried to keep it as clean as possible. And so I, yes, and, and that's a very good point. So when they had, like, I could not determine where they were emphasizing something or they were making an emphasis or I couldn't determine the theme, that's when I just labeled it as a comment.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So, so if they were saying, we want you to do this, you know, we want you to consider health and safety, but we also want our kids to be back in school, but we also want you to have synchronous instruction. If they had like multiple things that they were emphasizing, I, I, I termed, I, um, I labeled it as a comment. And then I made notes on the side of that to understand what is the most, what is the thing that's trending through all these various comments? And what is the things, what are the things that people are really emphasizing? And so some of the things that they're really emphasizing is that we want to take into, they want us to take in consideration that we have working parents in Arlington. And we need to understand that having them take on a huge responsibility as moving their kids forward in the curriculum is going to impact their ability to provide for their families. So we need the more structure. So they were just, you know, making sure that we understood that these are the things that you want, we want you to consider. I don't know if I answered your question with that.
Yes, yeah. No, I mean, I just, you know, I was thinking about, you know, fifteen compliments. But if they said, thank you for your hard work, but I'm really worried about safety, that got put into safety or, and not-
If, though, the comments were, they were pretty pure. People who were just happy, they just said, thank you very much. We got a lot out of the remote learning plan and that was pretty much it. And so those are the, and, and, and I understand what you're saying. And some of the comments, they said, thank you very much for everything that you're doing, but we want you to consider this. And so I, I kind of utilized that. The compliments are just pure compliments, nothing else. Uh, there were other, um, comments that had compliments in there, but they were like, thank you very much, but we really want you to consider this. And I did that because I wanted, I really wanted to, you know, let parents know or like during the meeting, like we're talking now. And, and I really wanted to understand what they wanted us to focus on, so I would put it under another label.
Thanks. And then my other question, um, we, you didn't talk too much about it in terms of the actual responses, but something that, um, stood out to me as I looked at it was the level of stress, stress and the concern, um, of social and emotional wellbeing, um, that families had for their students. And, um, I just wanted to highlight it because it did stand out for me. And then just, um, you know, you've been talking about, uh, it a lot in terms of the plans going forward, but, and it's here, um, with, uh, number seven hundred, um, comments, um, or responses to, for that to just really be something that, um, is being considered and supported and thought about as kids go back. Um, because even though, you know, parents really want kids back and there's a lot of wanting kids to interact with one another, it's going to be really different than what it looks like before. And I think we really need to think about how to support students feeling safe and coming back into the classroom, um, in a situation that's going to look really different from what they left in March.
Yes, I want to say that, and there's a continuum there. And, and there are parents that are worried about the impact on their social, the, the child's social emotional wellbeing because we have to put these health protocols in place. So we actually had parents that wrote in their message, in their response, that they're thinking of not sending their kids back to school if we have to have the health protocols in place because they feel like the reason that you send your kids to school is to have that interaction with peers. And they feel like the, 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 you know, the negative impact on the social emotional wellbeing of their student is more, um, important, is, eh, they, they hold that as a priority over the kids actually, you know, they're, they're more fearful of the lack of interaction than they are about their kids contracting the coronavirus.
And, uh, yeah, I, I think, you know, I'm, I know more, you know, early childhood, but I just, I, I think teachers are really skillful and they're going to be able to support students in navigating this new school, you know, environment, but still, you know, facilitate those peer interactions. And, um, but I just hope it's something that, you know, as you're doing these working groups and planning through the summer, that it's really at the forefront of, of all the work that you guys are doing.
Absolutely. I mean, the, the, the parents really emphasize, and I want the whole community to know, I understand that they were, they were saying, like, when their kids were not in school and they're in the remote learning environment, that they didn't have interactions with their peers and that really impacted many of our students, you know, very negatively. So they're really concerned about, um, not only having the interaction, but making sure that we are considering how we're going to acclimate kids back into the, the structure of school in the fall and the spend, uh, you know, make sure that we're spending time thinking about how we're going to do that.
I would also like to amplify what you just said, Ms. Exton, because, um, we have tremendous confidence in our teaching staff to have this be a wonderful learning experience for our students. And yes, it won't be exactly like it was. It'll be a little bit more structured learning than we've had, that they've been used to. But do I think that they are going to create very supportive classrooms and do an excellent job? Absolutely. But we're, and we're going to have to do whatever we can to help support them in being able to, to do that, that kind of work. But we have an amazing teaching staff and, um, we, we know that they will do a great job.
Great. Um, we're going to go out of order and take, um, Mr. Dillman now. Um, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Carden.
I have to go to a Conservation Commission meeting to represent the Arlington High School Building Committee. So thank you, Jane, for doing that. Um, you know, I, I think I don't really have any questions. Rod, I, I think this is good work. I, I would say that, um, when we have a, so I, I heard this already earlier. When we have the, when we have a plan, um, it's going to be important to survey parents based on that plan. Here's the plan for the, the year. Um, that was, let's just say, for, I guess, you know, we reviewed it at a school committee meeting and whatever Kathy said earlier, July thirty-first or whenever that is. And then right, like, right after that, that plan needs to get published to the, to parents and the community. Um, and the survey needs to go out and we need to see what people think now that we have a plan and where they fall in it. And I think that data is going to be very telling. The other, the other point I want to make in this data is, you know, there's a, there's a mixture, there's a, there's a, you know, a segment of the population that seems to be willing to have their kids go back almost, you know, no matter what, as long as there's reasonable safety precautions. And, and then there's a whole segment of people that don't want to go back no matter what. And so that's why this parallel remote learning option, which Kathy is trying to, has, uh, advocated for successfully at the state level, is a, I think the right way to go for Arlington. So.
Thank you for that. I just want, I, I just want everyone to understand that- Thank you for that. I just want, I just want everyone to understand that when I was reading the comments, I understand, I wanted to, I actually was feeling what people were, because when you spend this much time with data, you actually can feel what they're feeling. And I understand that. So those are the things that we're prioritizing. And I agree with Dr. Bodie and Ms. Ekten that we do have the talent and we, we understand this. So we are making that a priority. And that's the one thing I wanted to emphasize during this presentation, that I hear the public, I hear what they're saying, and these are definitely a priority for us as we move forward.
Yeah. And also, this, this is related to my comment earlier in the evening. I do believe that teachers with support can find creative solutions and share those solutions across the district and create a set of best practices that can keep kids safe and, and teach and, 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 and learning as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden?
Thank you. Thanks for, for putting all that together. So more, just a couple of, of comments. You know, one, one was just, there, there was, there was some feedback from the community on the survey. I'm not sure how much of it made it directly to you, Dr. McNeil or Dr. Bodie. You know, both with the, the types of questions and the scale of the responses, it was only one disagree and three levels of agree. So I mean, I think there are some design principles around surveys that somebody in the district needs to learn. And, you know, there's community members who do this as, as their job to conduct consumer research that can, that are, you know, offered to help. There's certainly professional development opportunities, but I, I do think, given the frequency that we do surveys, we, we probably should be a bit better at it. Then it, with regard to this, the results of the survey, I think, you know, two things jump out at me. One, one is, is the, the lower grade levels. We certainly knew that that was going to be an area of, of, of difficulty. The survey clearly shows that. And I think over the next few weeks, for the remote option that we're offering and for the possibility that we have to go remote completely again or hybrid, we need to find out what the best practices are for lower grades. There are two virtual schools in Massachusetts, there's virtual schools across the country that do have lower grade levels. And they are engaging their students somehow. And we need to be connecting with those leaders and finding out how, how they do it so that we can, we can apply some of those best practices here in Arlington. It's, it's extremely difficult to keep those young kids engaged without a lot of parental support. That's not, you know, necessarily something we're going to be, be able to solve. But, but there are, there has to be some learning somewhere. I don't know. Ms. Pretz, if, if you have any comments on, on, on where we can get that knowledge. But I think, I think that's, that's clearly an issue that, that, that somebody in the district needs to be focusing on. So Ms. Pretz, did you want to, do you have anything you can?
I would like to, I would like to respond to two things before Ms. Pretz says something. Number one, I want to let the public know that these questions are not arbitrary. They are field-tested questions. I understand, and that did come out through some of the comments. But we did not just make up these questions. These questions came from definitely vetted sources. So I just want to make sure that I'm being very clear with that. And, and let the public know that. I know I did get some feedback on some of the questions. And I think that's going to happen on any survey that you send out. You're going to have some questions. And anybody who's done any research, you're going to get some critical feedback on a survey. I don't know any survey that I've ever conducted through research where it's just been totally okay. People have always had some type of, you know, question about, you know, this question wasn't really what I wanted it to be. So I will say that. Secondly, we are, and I'll get to it in our PD plan, we are definitely, I, I want everyone to know that we, I have taken this information into consideration. And we have a lot of professional development that is happening this summer. And I will get to that when we get to that portion of the, of the agenda. But we are, you know, we're, you know, I've signed, you know, teachers up for a course at Harvard that focuses directly on online instruction. And I've also, we've had free webinars that we have also had teachers attend. That was one that happened today or yesterday that is also was sent out by Harvard where we had other practitioners engaging in a dialogue about, you know, ways to engage students at all levels through online instruction. So I, I understand what you're saying. And I just want to, you know, just solidify the fact that this is definitely something that, this is where we're moving towards. And this is a large focus of our PD for the summer. So Ms. Pretz, if you wanted to go ahead and respond.
And, and I can jump in too. And I think that there's, there's so much that we've learned from this experience. And I think that it's absolutely our concern that our youngest learners need to do better to engage them if we are back in a remote learning environment. And, you know, we're hoping that that's not true. And like was mentioned earlier, we really are doing everything we can to make sure that we have those children in school because we think that that's the best experience for them. But having said that, you know, we have to kind of look at the way this all happened and, and kind of the ups and downs and the patterns of how this developed. And I think that our teachers, which we've also touched on, really do know how to engage students. But what they were thrown into very quickly and without a whole lot of notice was how do I engage students in a remote learning environment? When that's not the experience of our youngest children. So, you know, very appropriately, our fourth and fifth graders, for example, were able to go with that a little bit more smoothly because they already had an environment in which they were engaging with their teachers remotely, even before we closed. They used Google Classroom. They had experience with how to collaborate with online tools. And our youngest kids just didn't have that because that's not something that we did with them. So our hope is that through the professional development that Rod is mentioning, you know, the teachers are very much engaged in that and thinking about the ways at all levels that if we were to go back into a remote learning environment, that our children would be better prepared to do that. I think overwhelmingly though, in talking to parents and in talking to students and, and talking to the teachers while school was still in session in a remote way, that it was that social emotional connection that those youngest kids really needed the most. And so I think we learned a lot about how to engage kids within that environment. So, for example, at first, when we closed, it was about making sure that everybody was connected, first of all. Because our youngest kids didn't have computers. They didn't know how to get online with SpyPonder's accounts. The adults didn't know how to do that. They didn't even know they had SpyPonder accounts. And there was this huge learning curve for everybody in that way. You may remember that at first we were doing things like communicating with email and then getting those, getting that training into place so that those teachers could use Google Classroom so that the children could try to engage in that way. And so since that's happened, we've had a lot of practice, we've had a lot of work together, we've collaborated as teams and found another example, like having a whole class morning meeting with a kindergarten classroom. You know, some people were much more adept at that than others at first. Teachers who felt more comfortable doing that in kindergarten than others. Or just that the children were overwhelmed from that experience at first. And we had to learn that, in fact, we have to put them in much smaller groups. And then even getting them into smaller groups, that there are some kids who just weren't going to feel safe in that environment and needed one-on-one connection with their classroom teachers. And really finding the time so that teachers could connect with kids and find the ways to connect with kids, even though they couldn't be together in person. So I feel like we've just learned so much about this and will continue to do so. And administrators too, taking part in that PD over the summer to see how best we can do that. Because we can. And I think it's so true, you know, what Dr. Bodie was saying about how talented our teaching staff is. And that they really do want more than anything else to connect with the children in a, in a safe and supportive way. And so I really do have a great amount of faith that we're going to be able to do that. And we'll, we'll take everything that we learned and all the feedback that people gave us to make that experience better in the, in the, you know, situation if we have to go back to that again. But it will be important to, to hopefully, if we can do it in a safe way, be in school so that we can create those communities, so that we can continue them if we have to leave school again. I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's very helpful. Again, I, I think everybody acknowledges how difficult the spring was. And, and everybody also acknowledges how hard everybody worked to try to make it as good as, as we could. But I think we also need to acknowledge, and the survey shows with the 800 people who, who disagreed that, that their students had a positive experience, that this was sort of a disaster. And we have to find a way to do better. And I just think we need to be honest that it didn't go very well, no matter how hard we tried. And, and we need to find a way to do better.
And I think the important part there is that it didn't go, so it didn't go very well for a lot of people and that we need to do better. And we need to learn from that. But we also need to acknowledge that there were a lot of really good and strong things that happened. So through the whole time of the school closure, I was talking to parents on the phone, we were emailing. We were having calls like this online and even anecdotally talking to people through things like IEP meetings that we had online. And hearing that there actually were a lot of children who really did get a lot out of that experience and really benefited from the ability to learn how to manage their own time and learn how to have some choice in what they were doing and connect in a different way. And so we want to be able to, to pull from those positive experiences too and really think what went well? Because there were things that went well. But really do better for those people that it did not go well. And, and really encourage those families to reach out to us when things aren't going well because we want to make it better for you. And it took a while for us to get people to really start to share that too, to be able to say, you know what, we're really struggling. What can you help us with this? And really connect with them on that personal level. So. But I, I absolutely agree with what you're saying is that there was a lot that did not go well. And we need to learn from that and know that moving forward, we can be better. Because we do have the, the people, the talented and very caring and thoughtful people to do that work. We just need to support them in doing it. And that's our charge.
Great. Thank you. No more. Ms. Morgan.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thank you for sharing the survey results. I personally would find it helpful to get the survey results cleaned up without the ones that did double comments or you did, did two answers. And I don't feel, I appreciate that you've shown us what the actual data is. But to me, the message gets lost with all these little blips of, you know, one person put agree and disagree and, and stuff. And it'd be nice to see without the small amounts of, of other comments. I mean, they, they can be put someplace else. And also I'd like to see, you know, you said that you looked at, like, where the disagree comments came from and that you found that they were in lower grades. Can we get that in some form? You know, could you make that into a graph for us so that we can see it? And also so that we can talk to other parents when they come to us and, and say, yeah, you know, this is at least acknowledge that, yeah, the survey showed what you're telling me or, or it didn't. And, and, you know, trying to, then we can try and understand why, you know, what's different about what they're saying.
Can I, can I just do one thing, Ms., and, and show you just, I want to show you how the, the survey is interactive and, and you can do this. So let me just share my screen again. One second. Can you see the survey now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to go back here and I'm going to show you just how interactive this survey is. So I, I appreciate your question. And so what I'm going to show you is that the way that you can disaggregate, I would have to send you the link. But the way that you can disaggregate the data. So if you want to see how all the first grade parents, you know, parents who have kids in the first grade responded to the survey, you click on this pie slice here. And then you'll see the survey, that you'll see the changes. So you'll see, these are all the first grade parents, how they responded across the district. This is how they're distributed in the buildings. And then this is how they responded to the various prompts on this page. So you can disaggregate the data on each page just by clicking on the pie slice. So if you click back on it, it'll bring you back to how everybody responded. And so if you want to go to a particular question and you want to say, the work that my child has been getting through remote learning is manageable for me as a parent, I want to look at all the no's. So I'm going to click right here on the no's. And then you scroll back up here, you'll see that there were 986 no's. And this is how it's distributed throughout the grades. And this is how it's distributed throughout the, the schools. So you can see that. And if you hover your cursor over each one of the grade levels, you'll see the percentage of parents with kids in second grade, this is the percentage of those parents that responded no to that question.
Okay.
And then you go back down and you click on it again, and it'll bring you back to the full survey.
Okay. Yeah, so that's helpful.
I just want to say one more thing, that you can only disaggregate the data on each page. So as you go to the other pages and you see the pie charts, you have to do the same thing. That's why the pie charts on each page.
Okay. Yeah, so Ms. Fitzgerald did share with us a link to the survey, so we can play with that.
Yeah.
It's also, if, if we're trying to communicate out to the public, it's helpful to have some of this information just not in, you know, just as their own pictures, not as, you know, we don't want everybody going in and, and necessarily mucking with the survey. Or I don't know, maybe you do, but, but what we're trying to do is convey the story, not, not just the story that people choose to pick and click at.
Sure, absolutely.
So and just to echo what Mr. Carden said about the survey. Yeah, one other thing that came up was that the survey, the description for the survey said that it was to be anonymous, but then it was required to list the email address. And I know at least at the start of the survey, people were having, people didn't take that kindly. I think that requirement may have changed as the survey went on, but it, it's things like that that make people talk, you know, you hope that people talk so that they all get interested and go and fill out the survey. But when something like that shows up and isn't, I, I mean, it shouldn't show up at all, right? And when it does, it makes it look like the survey isn't truly anonymous. Or, you know, people get the wrong impression. And, and that impression then echoes down the lines. And that isn't a good thing.
I take full responsibility for that. It was a button that you had to push in order to make the survey anonymous. I didn't push that button at the beginning. That was like in the first couple of hours of the survey. But we did not collect any email addresses from the survey. Once I found that that was happening, I clicked off that, I clicked on the button. And so no email addresses were collected. None of, it is anonymous. So that was a mistake. I take full responsibility for that.
Okay. But maybe we should be running it inside, you know, with a few test people before it goes out to everybody.
No, I did, I did that. Like I said before, it was a mistake. So I did want it, I, what I do, just to tell you the process of what I do, is I put myself as a person and I fill out the survey myself. And that was something I just overlooked. I was just trying to focus on the questions. And I just take full responsibility for that. After the first couple of hours, I clicked off the button. So it's, it's, it was a mistake. It was a human error.
Yeah. And, and I'm saying, maybe it shouldn't just go to you. Maybe it should go to five of your closest friends or in, in the department just to get feedback on, does it, or, or go to us or something, just to get feedback on, is, is there issues with the survey? You know, like of that magnitude that can be easily fixed. So.
Yeah. And, and I, again, I did send it to other people. I've sent it out to three other people. So I did, it was myself and a couple of other people. It's again, I, something I overlooked, human error. I take full responsibility.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Schickman?
Thank you. My questions and comments were more or less aligned with what Dr. Allison Ampe said. Would, would have been my hope to have been presented at this point. The numbers grouped by age group, K to 2, 3 to 5, 6 through 8, 9 to 12. Because the experiences are very different by grade level. But if we get the ability to go and play and disaggregate on our own, that'll give me some information that, that I can use going forward to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Mr. Heiner?
Thank you for doing this.
Kate, that last display of being able to aggregate it, as Mr. Schlickman and Dr. Ampe said, it's going to take a two or three hours of my night tonight. I really, I'm going to get to sleep playing with the numbers. I just want to express that I started in teaching right at the end of being the source of all information and getting students involved. And I think it's going to be a challenge that I think our teachers are going to do well at. But going back to this, being a lecturer as opposed to being a person who gets the kids actively involved and socializing with each other is going to be a difficult task, something I think they're going to be able to do. Quick question. Dr. Bodie, you mentioned before that you think we have the space to put, if everybody decides to come back, what do we do if everybody does come back and we don't have the distancing or the spacing to do?
Well, we're doing our analysis with the assumption that everyone does come back.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess, you know, for me, it was, it was sort of interesting looking through this survey. And, you know, we're three weeks now, I think, out of school. And I feel a little less traumatized having had three elementary kids last for three months. And the survey responses brought a lot of that back to me. And, you know, but it was good to know, I guess, that I wasn't, that I wasn't alone in finding it so challenging to manage. I, you know, I appreciate and fully support the movement towards bringing as many students back as can safely come and who want to be with us. And I'm really encouraged by what we're hearing tonight about the plans that are well underway to make that happen. Looking at the survey, I remain very anxious and skeptical about our ability to build on what feels to be a pretty nominal beginning with remote learning. Should we need to move to that at some point next year? So that, you know, there's a lot of work to be done in that area. I think there was, you know, it looks like there was a lot of feedback. I really felt as a parent and as somebody, you know, experiencing this from mid-March until, you know, almost the end of June, that there were a lot of opportunities during that time to take feedback from parents. We asked for email access for fourth and fifth graders dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of times. Never happened. There were, you know, lots of situations like that. We asked for synchronous meetings with teachers and that that be a requirement. And that was, you know, no, 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 we're not going to do that. And so it, you know, it seems like we've got a lot of work to do on our remote plan. I think the survey is, you know, bears that up. I'm fully on board with what, you know, that the focus is on, you know, return to school. And but, you know, I guess, you know, it's hard to believe, but if we can pull that off, then, you know, figuring out how to create a system where we can provide adequate remote learning options for kids so that we would have very different survey results is another just Herculean task on top of that. So anyway, I'm really glad that you shared the survey with us. I'm really glad that we did it. I think, you know, we need to, you know, we need to do more certainly in August, early August, once the, you know, once the plans have been developed. And, you know, it sounds like obviously this team is really committed to doing that. So that's, that's great. So thank you so much. Is there anything else that we want to say about the survey?
So I just want to, again, just iterate, reiterate the fact that I agree with you. We do need to focus on various areas. And I'm glad that Kate was able to talk about the process that we went through in order to develop the remote learning plan. You know, and we, you know, wanted to focus on like getting the curriculum out, getting the materials out to parents. And I just want to highlight a couple of things. I threw the open responses. So working parents, I want everybody to know, I understand, I feel the frustration from the working parents is saying, I need to focus on the moving my children forward in the curriculum and doing my job. I understand that childcare and a remote learning plan will be an issue. And so, you know, how are parents, if they're going to go back to work full-time, if we have to go to a remote learning plan, I understand that that's a conundrum that we're going to have to be able to try to work out. You know, looking at the amount of engagement, that is something that we are focusing on, trying to make the lessons and the activities more engaging, even if the kids come back and you say we have a certain way of delivering instruction. That's why we're investing so much in online tools. Because even if we're in school, we can utilize those online tools to have engaging lessons. And so we're figuring out how to utilize that. Because if we can maximize the use of the online tools in a remote learning environment, I feel like we can maximize it even if we're in school and integrate those tools into our instruction. And then looking at making the assignments meaningful and giving the proper feedback. That was another thing that people were saying. They were saying the kids were not engaged and they weren't motivated because the assignments didn't mean anything. So we are looking at when we come back, but that they will count for grades. And it will be, we will focus on providing the type of feedback that students need in order to get the, to be able to assess their own work. So I just wanted to emphasize that when you spend so much time with the information, you want to give the message to everyone that we're not sitting here sitting on our laurels and saying, oh, we did such a great job. What we're ours, we're trying to think what we did well and what some things that we have a glimmer of hope that we want to continue on. And then things that we want to build off of that. And then we want to take those other areas and say, you know what? This is where we really need to focus our intention. So I appreciate all the parents who took the time to give us their feedback. And some of it was hard to hear, because when people are saying things like we didn't care, that's not the case. I don't think there's one person I've spoken to within Arlington Public Schools that was nonchalant or didn't care or there was some type of withdrawal. Everybody cared about doing the best job and we were trying to do that on a daily basis. So I want everyone to know that, that it was a Herculean task to go to a remote learning environment. It's just like if we all had to get rid of our cars and start walk, walking to work, you would probably start off on a certain plan. But then as you go, as you travel down that path of trying to figure out how to, you know, you know, fill that void, you're going to move in a certain direction. And that's what we're trying to do right now. And that's where our PD is focused on throughout the summer. So I appreciate all the feedback. And another thing that came out in the survey is that Arlington Public Schools did not arbitrarily on their own decide to just to go to a remote learning environment. It was because the health and safety of our students and our adults that are in front of our students. And then the governor came out with a plan that shut down the schools and extended it to the end of the year. So this wasn't something that was made, this was not a decision that was made in a vacuum. We did this because we care about our students and we care about the adults. So at no point was there a lack of care or a lack of consideration of what we were asking parents to do. We were stuck at that place because we didn't really understand how to move forward in a certain manner. And as we went along, I think we got better at it. And I have every hope and consideration, I mean, every hope and, you know, I just think that our teachers are committed. And that shows because many of our teachers, even though they had a rough spring and trying to work harder and trying to deliver the curriculum, they have dedicated themselves to joining up and having these discussions throughout the summer and being involved in professional development. So to me, that is an indicator of the character and the passion of the educators that we had that worked for Arlington Public Schools. So I really see us moving forward in a positive direction. I just ask everyone to have a growth mindset. Because as you try to do something that you've never done before, you are going to have some hiccups along the way. So we, I want us to work in partnership with the community and understand that we do care, we are putting forth the effort and we hear you. So those are the things I want parents to understand, that I'm empathetic to what they went through. Because I'm a parent and I went through the same thing. And I live in a district and I don't want to, you know, disparage the district with what I live in, the district that I live in. But I have the same concerns as a parent. So I'm living it, I'm working it, I'm a professional. And we have professionals in Arlington Public Schools where we have many teachers that are also living this. So we are going to put every, put forth full effort into trying to address the things that we need to address from the survey and things that we know that we need to address as professionals in order to engage our kids and give them the best education that we can moving forward in the fall.
Great, thank you. So, man, Dr. McNeil, you just keep going here. You're on one agenda item after another. So summer, summer PD plan update. And I think you've given us some, you've given us sort of a glimpse of it. And I, so, and I asked to put this on the agenda so that we could, you know, just get a sense of some of the opportunities that are available for teachers. I am on the everyone email list. And so I had seen some really interesting things being pushed out of your office, Dr. McNeil, opportunities for teachers for this summer. And so if you could give us a brief sort of overview of what that's looking like, that would be super.
Sure. So I'm going to start off by saying that we have, and I'm just going to share my screen one more time, because I want to highlight this very exciting learning opportunity that has, that we are investing in. And this is what I've been talking about. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yep, so this is a course that Harvard is offering. It's entitled Developing Strategies for Online Teaching and Learning. And you will see that there's a registration fee, but you'll see that it's a four-week course. And then I'm just going to scroll down here to some of the logistics of the course, how it will be implemented. And then these are the major components of the course. And these are the things that we're going to cover while we'll take the course. I'm taking the course and I have about upwards of 43 educators from across the district, administrators, coaches, teachers who have expressed an interest in taking the course. I've actually registered that, them. I've also applied for AEF grant to help with paying for the registration fees. And I've met with the AEF leadership. And I've also met with the, one of the designers of the course, along with a cohort of individuals who are interested in taking the course, along with the outreach coordinator from Harvard. So I'm very excited about what we'll be able to learn. And to Mr. Carden's point, yes, we know that we need to understand how to deliver engaging, effective online instruction. And we're looking for professional development opportunities and this is just evidence of that. And so I'm happy to also report back about our experience as we take the course. And also, as we met with the designers of the course and the outreach coordinator from Harvard, I also explored having a partnership throughout the year so we can have ongoing conversations and being able to tweak what we're doing throughout the year. We also are offering a cultural, our anti-racism course that's given, sponsored by Ideas for our administrators and teachers. We have two sessions going that are going to be starting up in a couple of weeks. And we have about 19 administrators that are going to take the course. And we have about 14 teachers who also signed up for the course. We have almost tripled what we've invested in, what we normally do for curriculum planning over the summer in order to make sure we understand the, you know, key understandings that we need to focus on moving forward and how that's going to impact the scope and sequence of each one of the content areas as we move forward in the fall. So we have lots of different groups that are, that are meeting throughout the summer. That includes special educators, ELL teachers and classroom teachers. We also have a digital learning team that's led by Dr. Bisson, that department. They're scheduling to have a professional development session on how to integrate the online learning tools in many different ways. And we're looking at, that's going to start sometime in mid-August. We also have various sessions that are going on, that are going to focus on UDL and online learning. That, that course is going to start in September. That's also being given by, that is also sponsored by Harvard, a part of their professional development series. So I've already targeted that course and I'm going to send that information out to the district. And then we have just, you know, various, we have two synchronous teaching instructional study groups that are going on, one at the elementary level, one at the secondary level where we meet every week and we talk about best practice and we look at research. And we have, you know, I'm planning on having the reps, the representatives from the different online tools that we're going to invest in to attend those meetings. So we can talk about best practice and how we can integrate those online learning tools into our discussion. And then we're also going to, you know, leverage the experience that we had over the spring. And the teachers who have, you know, signed up to be part of these study groups are talking about the things that they did and sharing best practice across the district. So I think that's going to be very beneficial. And it's represented throughout, you know, we have representatives from each grade level and the various support areas. And then we have Thompson, Hardy and Gibbs who have signed up for the MTSS, sponsoring a PVIS Academy. They will be taking part in that. And then we have Thompson Middle School who is also going to be in the MTSS Academy focused on social emotional learning and mental health. So that along with other, you know, collaborative groups that are meeting throughout the summer, you know, all that is like taking place this summer. And then we have another math group that is, we have teachers at the elementary level, the K-5 level, and coaches that are participating in equitable, equitable and effective K-5 remote math instructional group. And they're meeting this Monday and they get together and they met last, you know, a couple of Mondays ago, I think. And they're talking about best practice as well. So we have a very robust curriculum planning, professional development program that, you know, teachers, coaches and administrators are a part of throughout the entire summer. And we're investing quite a bit of money into compensating teachers for being a part of this and running the sessions as well as into the online learning tools that we need to be able to implement in the fall. I'll pause right there.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. I'm going to just look and see if anybody had any questions about that. I see Mr. Schlickman. And that's, and Dr. Allison Ampe. Okay, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Just, it'd be wonderful to get a list of this. I couldn't keep up with all the acronyms and stuff. What is UDL?
Universal Design for Learning.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Schlickman?
I'm just very impressed by the depth and scope of what's happening and the leadership that Dr. McNeil is putting forward. And I was going to ask the same question as Dr. Allison Ampe did, is UDL went by me very quick, very quickly. Yeah, it would definitely be helpful to have some of this written down in advance and certainly not to use acronyms when talking at us. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. And I will, I will define the other acronym that I use. PVIS is Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports.
Yeah, I, I know PVIS. I know that others might not, but that, that got, that I understood. But if I'm throwing out my pad of paper wondering what UDL is, I'm sure that, you know, it's a puzzle.
I will definitely put together a one-pager that has all the different things that I spoke about and I will share it with you.
That'd be great. It really helps for us to have something in writing to follow along with.
Absolutely.
Mr. Heiner.
That initial course that you mentioned from Harvard, is that open to anybody? Wants to pay the bucks?
Well, the educators. So they say, you know, teachers, administrators. Are you asking if school committee members can attend?
How about a retired school teacher that's interested in how to do it?
I will, I will look into that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. McNeil. So the next item is an anti-racism resolution. And this was something that was brought forward by the MASC to define our acronyms, because I guess we do that now, which is a good thing, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And it was something that Dr. Allison Ampe brought up two weeks ago and is on tonight's agenda. So I, I'm actually going to put her on the spot for a second. Just, is there anything else that you wanted to share about it, Dr. Allison Ampe? We can't hear you. We still can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I can't. There's too many things going on. So I saw this as just a small but positive step in the, showing the direction that we're trying to go. And I like this resolution because it actually doesn't speak just to our district, but it talks about all districts in the Massa, in the state of Massachusetts. And I think that's important too. I mean, I think we, our district should be taking these points to heart. But I think it's equally important to be applying them to the entire state. Um, and I didn't know if you wanted, I know that there, I've seen on social media that there are some other activists who have had, uh, the, I believe it's the Black Student Union, who have a list of demands. I personally have not seen those demand, I mean, I haven't seen them forwarded to us. And I would hope that we can address those when they do reach us. Um, I don't know if they came to you or, or to, um, uh, Dr. Bodie. But in the meantime, I thought I wanted to be sure that we at least have this resolution to talk about and I hope to pass. And that, that's all for right now. Do you want me to try and share my screen and show it?
Um, I, you know, I probably should read it just so that everybody, well, it's pretty, yeah. I think, I, I think we want to read it. Um, so, and just to answer your question, Dr. Allison Ampe, I, I think that, the, um, the BSU, reading, um, the email that Dr. Jangar sent to the AHS community, it sounds like they have shared those, um, with him, which, you know, is, as is their, their, you know, their decision. And that's, that's great. Um, and that, you know, um, Dr. Bodie, if you could communicate to him, um, from us that, you know, as he, as he works through them and if he needs, you know, input from, or, you know, wants to bring some of them to us, you know, we're obviously open to, to hearing and, and supporting him. So, um, and, and our students certainly. Um, so is there, um, I guess, do we have, do we have a motion for discussion on this resolution? Should we do that first? Does that make sense?
I'd like to make a motion that we, I'd like to make a motion that we pass this resolution.
Second.
Great. Um, so, discussion. Mr. Schlickman?
Uh, I, I am very much in favor of adopting the resolution. Uh, it has been circulating around, uh, school committees in Massachusetts. I believe there are over 100 school committees who have adopted it. This is a really positive sign that, uh, lots of governing bodies in the state are really active in terms of addressing issues of racism, uh, be it overt or systemic. And, uh, I think that we're, uh, well-served by being within that group of school committees. It's also going to be brought forward as a resolution for the MASC Delegate Assembly in the fall, which will probably not be held in person, probably be a virtual event. But, uh, school committees throughout the state will be able to vote on this resolution and adopt it as, uh, the policy of MA, or, uh, of MASC.
Okay. Any other discussion? So seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and, and read it so that, um, we have it. And then, um, go from there. So this is the, uh, School Committee Anti-Racism Resolution. Whereas as schools have the responsibility to equip students with their civil right of obtaining a free and appropriate public education, it is the responsibility of each school to ensure we create a welcoming community for all students. And whereas it is the responsibility that every district provides to all district staff, including school committee members, annual professional development on diversity, equity, inclusion. And whereas every district will commit to recruiting and retaining a diverse and culturally responsive teaching workforce. And whereas every district will examine their policies for institutional and systemic rat racialized practices and implement change with sustainable policies that are evidence-based. And whereas every district will incorporate into their curriculum the history of racial oppression and works by black authors and works from diverse perspectives. And whereas we as a school district leaders can no longer remain silent to the issues of racism and hate that continue to plague our public and private institutions. Resolve that the Arlington School, um, Arlington Public Schools and all of the school districts in the Commonwealth must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity and inclusion is embedded and practiced for our students, family, faculty and staff. We must ensure our own school culture and that of every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist, that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter. So that is the, that is the text. So, um, so let's see, where are we at here? We, um, motion, we got to vote. Okay, Ms. Exton.
Yeah.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Mr. Heiner?
Yes.
And, um, I'm also yes. So that's a six-nothing vote with Mr. Philman absent. Um, so the, so the superintendent cert, uh, cert, School Committee Focus Group. I had some mixed results in my request for whether or not we wanted to do it as part of a meeting. Um, so since we're all here, I'd like to just, so one option would be to do an hour, uh, focus group session before, uh, the school committee meeting starts at 6:30. Um, or we could find another mutually agreeable time. But I do think that there's, you know, I think we want to, we want to do this in July. Is that your sense, Mr. Schlickman?
Uh, i- we want to do it as soon as we can, but it's, it's not imperative that, that we do it in July. But I think there are a couple of opportunities. Um, uh, not this coming Saturday, because we wouldn't be able to post it, but the following two Saturday mornings would be appropriate. We are also not scheduled for a school committee meeting next Thursday at 6:30. And we could use that time. There's tremendous flexibility on the part of Mr. Kuchar in terms of getting us together uh, to, to do this. And, uh, I heard at the last meeting that we're not particularly interested in running a focus group on the same night with our regular meeting. So, uh, uh, if any of those three options being, uh, let me look at my calendar here. Be, be it either the 16th of, uh, of, of July, which is Thursday, July 18th at 10:00 AM or July 25th or 10:00 AM, or any other, uh, time that might interest the committee, that would be fine.
So my strong preference is not to do it on a Saturday. So, Mr. Heiner?
Just to point of clarification, is this considered an open meeting, under the open meeting law? And, but the only ones that would be allowed to speak are the school committee and whoever's running it. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, I have, I'm open to any time. My wife is happy to get rid of me for an hour.
It, it should take no more than an hour. Um, and, uh, I, I, if, uh, we normally keep Thursdays open, next Thursday of the 16th, uh, if nobody objects, uh, thumbs up, thumbs down for next Thursday? If I see six thumbs up, I'll make the motion. I move that we schedule a special meeting solely for the purpose of conducting a focus group with Mr. Kuchar on Thursday, the 16th of July at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Exton? Yes. Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Mr. Heiner?
Yes.
I'm also yes. I will, uh, Mr. Schlickman, would you do me the favor of informing Mr. Philman of this?
Yes, I will. And I also want to announce that we've got some more focus groups coming up. There are three focus groups for community members, which will be scheduled Monday, July 20th at 10:00 AM, Wednesday, July 22nd at 4:00 PM, Monday, August 3rd at 7:00 PM. There will be a focus group for recent AHS alumni on Monday, July 22nd at 7:00 PM. And town meeting members will have a focus group on Wednesday, July 22nd at 8:00 PM. We're also working on scheduling focus groups, uh, with CPAC, the Select Board, uh, combination of the FinCom and Capital Planning Groups. And, uh, I've asked the town's Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator to work with us to do a diversity, inclusion-themed focus group. So that's where we are. I will send out publicity for the scheduled, uh, focus groups tomorrow and communicate them to the rest of the committee in writing.
Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. Um, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Bodie. We can't hear you.
Thank you. Um, I have, uh, just a few things. The first, I want to just talk a little bit about the high school project. Um, basically the project is going along fine. In fact, for, by now having students in school, we were able to move forward more quickly with the renovations that need to happen in the Downs Building. And that's all going fine. We did learn, however, that there was going to be potentially a delay with perimeter opening due to ever source of schedule. However, there's a workaround with that, that I've been engaged in conversations today about. And, you know, while obviously we would like to have the elevator working on the first day of school, uh, it is possible to do a workaround on that in case, and this is just an in case, that, um, that it won't be, we won't have the right amperage to run the elevator at the start of school. So that is, um, that is definitely, um, moving forward. Um, we've also had a temporary planning committee, uh, I should say, transition planning committee, which we have a standing meeting for, for the high school. And, um, one of the things that we are working on relates very much what we're talking about earlier. And that is how we're going to have a, a working environment with good ventilation and cooling in Fusco, uh, as we start back to school with the construction project right in front of the school. And so we, we've developed a plan and I feel very positive about that. And so that is moving forward. And that should, I think it will, it won't completely solve the problem, but it's certainly going to do tremendous amount to improve it. Um, I also want, this was sent out to all parents and noticed that the, that the, uh, school district is engaging in three community conversations over the summer. And the first of these conversations is July 15th from 7:00 to 8:30. And we have a number of our administrators that are going to be, um, at this, with this panel. And it is going to be moderated by Jillian Harvey, who is the new Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Coordinator for the Town of Arlington. Um, Ms. Harvey was the person who moderated the, uh, community conversation. There was a town, town-sponsored conversation, um, the end of June, the, I think it was the 24th of June. So that is happening. Uh, you need to, in order to be, participate, you do need to register. And that, the notice was sent out to all families. I think we, we probably should also get it out to, um, uh, you know, the, anybody else in the community would like to be able to participate with this.
Uh, Dr. Bodie, could I just interject that it's also available on our website?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I've asked principals to also send it out to their individual school communities.
All right. Um, one thing that's very important, and I've said this the last couple of meetings, and it was brought up, mentioned the issue of a census. Massachusetts is, is actually lagging, um, most of the states in this country for turning in their census. And our school system has a very vested interest in this because a lot of funds that come from the federal government to schools is based on census. Not to mention our representation in Congress is also rep, is also related to census. So, uh, please, if you have not turned in your census yet, it's still open for a number of months, I believe. I don't know what the closing date is yet. Um, please do that because funding for Massachusetts is very much related to, um, your completing your, your census. So is my public, my, I, my public, um, just, it's, it's something that we need to do. And as a state of all states, I think, we should be able to be in the forefront of this. Um, the other is where we are with kindergarten registrations is not substantially different than it was, um, the last meeting. We have 467 confirmed, the completed their application. And we have another 32 who are pending, uh, and missing certain parts of the application process. So right now we have 499 students, um, assuming that everyone who's pending, uh, actually has a completed application. This is about 30 to 35 less than what we were projecting for this year. And it's, you know, we'll see what happens. It could be that prospective kindergarten parents are also waiting to see what the plan is for the start of the school year. And then, um, that's actually it. That's, that's, that's the, uh, the main messages for that report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments? From the committee? I see Ms. Exton. I see Mr. Schlickman. Okay, Ms. Exton?
Um, you, you track all the enrollments. Are you, do you also track withdrawals? And have you seen an increase in that?
Um, we, we track withdrawals to the extent the parents no, notify us. One thing that does happen is that we, when we open school up, we always find, well, we have this student on our list and we were never notified. With withdrawals, we can allow, we encourage that actually at the school level. And then that's, there's a notification process. Um, you can, you can contact the central registrar. But to your question, yes, we do track it. And it doesn't seem to be a, any significant difference than it has been in every year. We've actually gained students, um, not, kindergarten aside, we've actually seen an increase in the number of students which exceed the number of students who've withdrawn.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah, um, not necessarily tacked onto the superintendent's report, but sort of in the neighborhood of what we've been talking about. A couple of questions. One, uh, I read, uh, Dr. Jangar's email regarding discussions he's having with students over the use of, uh, the, uh, downer logo and possible changes. Uh, I just want to, uh, send my appreciation to him for his, uh, thoughtful and fast leadership on the topic. And I hope that we as a committee are kept apprised of what go, what goes on because our policy requires us to be the authority to approve any logos that are used by, uh, by the school. I have a question. Were we ever able to get a, an EL teacher for an EL summer program?
I don't believe we did have an EL teacher for the summer program. Dr. McNeil?
No. Uh, no. So, uh, as I indicated before, you know, the spring was been very hard on our teachers. Uh, and there are some teach, there are ELL teachers who normally run that program, uh, decided that they wanted to take a break and, you know, focus on, uh, recharging their batteries and also, uh, be a part of the professional development that's going to take place throughout the summer. How, and then also, uh, we have extended our, our, uh, literacy and math programs over the summer. So there's a lot of overlap of the students that would be part of the ELL program who are also enrolled in those literacy and math programs. Uh, so what we have decided to do, and Mrs. Boussey, uh, is, is, and due to her leadership, she set up a small group tutoring program where the students would meet with the teacher in small groups, uh, over the summer. And so, um, and very, in, in sessions that take place two to three times a week. And they are, the length of each session is two to three hours. So we're focusing on So we're focusing on our, uh, students who are at the, the beginning EL students and ones who need the most support. So we have the EL tutoring, we don't have the full-time, uh, summer program that we normally have over the summer, uh, but we do have the small group tutoring program, uh, in place.
If we have students who are not aware of that, or is it, are they still able to avail themselves, or is it closed now?
Uh, so if you have parents that are interested in that, uh, you, I can have them, if you just have them send me an email, and then I'll, I'll work with Mrs. Boussey, see what we can do to support them.
That's excellent. The third, the third thing is, is that, you know, uh, we made mention earlier in the meeting of the Black Student Union and, and the demands that are being shared on social media. If. Any students want to talk to us about curriculum or policy, I, I want to make sure that they feel invited to come talk to us directly and have a conversation either with the curriculum subcommittee or with the, uh, policy subcommittee, uh, our doors open, and we'd really like to talk to them, uh, rather than on their own, rather than, uh, receiving third-party notification. And if you hear from folks who are concerned, uh, who would normally be communicating with the school committee, uh, in a roundabout manner, uh, I appreciate anyone in the administration to point them in our direction. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I will pass that on to Dr. Jango, who has, is has regular, um, meetings this summer with his work. I'll pass that on. I will also ask him, perhaps before the end of the summer, to talk, to come to the meeting, and we can put it on the agenda and talk about the, where we are with respect to, um, this town symbol that, uh, okay? And, you know, Dr. McNeil, we, we are having three conversations this summer with the community. This first one is on discipline. You've heard the report before, we certainly welcome you and hope you will attend this. But the next one, um, is going to be a listening, a listening conversation, uh, for, um, our parents of color. And then the third one, we're going to be focusing really on the fall, as an opportunity to engage in a forum conversation. Dr. McNeil, what is, the date was, the, the second one is, uh, July, I think it's, is it the 25th? I think it might be, but anyway.
Oh, let me, let me confirm.
All right. And so July 15th is our one, is talking about school discipline, which.
Yes.
Certainly overlaps with, with some of the issues that you're, you're referring to, Mr. Schickman.
That's the second one is July 29th.
29th.
They're all on, they're all Wednesdays, and they all run 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. The first one is next week, July 15th, as Dr. Bodie, uh, commented or stated. Uh, the second one is July 29th, and the third one is August 12th.
Thank you. Um, so subcommittee and liaison reports. And, um, before we started, before we go through those, I did want to mention, in case we want to, um, send this to one of our subcommittees, in the packet is some communication with the school committee from the Arlington Human Rights Council Commission, excuse me, um, under correspondence, received, it's the second document down, the HRC report from Ju- July 2020. Um, I think this was, yeah, it was written on the, the 5th. So in, in looking through this, um, you know, one possibility would be to, um, to consider having this, um, you know, having there be some engagement over this memo, um, in the CIA subcommittee, um, but I wasn't sure how people, what people thought about that. So, um, is there any discussion about that? Mr. Carden?
Uh, so as chair of the CIA committee, uh, I'm, I'm happy to take that on. I, I, uh, you know, I'm also willing to defer to my colleagues if they want to, uh, create a special subcommittee, uh, but that would have to be on an, on a, on the agenda at the next meeting, uh, to discuss.
So, Mr. Schickman?
Yeah, we can refer to any subcommittee we want. Usually, when we're dealing with other town agencies, uh, the starting point tends to be the Community Relations Subcommittee, but I think, uh, you know, Mr. Hayner's giving a sour look, so, uh, no, okay. I, I'll defer to Mr. Hayner's, uh, comments, and then we'll find a motion to refer to some subcommittee, because I think we should discuss it.
I was just gonna say that Mr. Carden and I can talk about it, and, uh, we can decide which one of us wants it, takes it. I, I go along with what Paul said, but, uh, as long as one of us addresses it and brings it to the committee, that's all that's necessary.
Okay. All right. So. Great. Um, so budget, uh, Dr. Allison Ampi? Can you not hear me? No?
I can hear you, I, I had my mute button off my screen. I couldn't note, um, I was trying to wave, I think CIA is a good spot to start for this. I hadn't seen it because it got buried in the things that we have to read at each committee meeting, and I didn't notice there was a different one tucked in there. Okay, so.
For chance, would you have a motion related to that?
Uh, yes, actually, I would. I move that the, uh, report, uh, from the Arlington Humans Rights Commission be, um, taken up by the CIA Committee, um, at a future meeting sometime soon.
Second.
A second from Ms. Exton, uh, discussion. Seeing none. Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Allison Ampi?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
And I am also yes, so six-nothing with Mr. Thielman absent. Subcommittee liaison reports and announcements, budget?
I'm sorry, I did it again. So I was actually trying to, okay, so budget doesn't have anything to report, but I hadn't been able to get your attention, um, so I'm going back, um, just three minutes in the meeting. I wanted to, uh, commend Dr. McNeil for his work on the first community conversation that was held, um, calling, uh, held on June 23rd, calling out the issues of time of reflection and action. I thought he really represented, um, the Arlington Public Schools well, and talked about some of the disciplinary issues and things that are going to be discussed further. But other panelists included the town manager, um, and police chief, uh, Flaherty, and, uh, I thought it was really an interesting conversation, uh, to listen to, and I'm glad that he represented us for that.
Thank you very much.
Um. Community relations.
Nothing to report at this time?
Uh, CIAA.
Uh, so we will be holding a meeting, uh, in the near future to review the Arlington Human Rights Commission report, and, uh, if necessary, also, um, get a status update on the planning for the fall.
Great. Facilities, Mr. Thielman is not here, but I will, in his stead, say that there is a facilities subcommittee meeting planned for the 15th of July at 2:30 p.m. The intention, this is a small subcommittee, I believe, it is just Mr. Dr. Allison Ampi and, um, Mr. Thielman, and they are going to discuss the readiness of, um, our 10 buildings with, uh, with relation to, uh, issues around COVID-19, including things like air circulation and screens, et cetera. So that has been scheduled. Policy, Mr. Schickman?
Uh, no report at this time, however, there's, uh, stuff on the back burner that has been there since, uh, we went out on COVID, and, uh, we've got some work to do, so we'll be looking to schedule a meeting within the next couple of weeks.
The high school building committee, we already got an update on that from Dr. Bodie. Dr. Allison Ampi, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
Um, superintendent's search process committee, anything more on that, Mr. Schickman?
Uh, we're running through focus groups, and, uh, life is good, things are going well, and, uh, the data is converging nicely. So we're moving forward.
Ms. Exton?
How, how long is the survey gonna be open?
Uh, it, it stays open as long as it stays open. I mean, we never have to close it, actually, but, uh, I would anticipate it would stay open through the summer.
Okay, thanks.
Liaison reports. Seeing none. Announcements. Seeing none. Future agenda items. Um, seeing none. So the one question related to future agenda items, um, over email today, Dr. Bodie asked if we wanted to consider moving, so we have our next meeting in two weeks' time, uh, well, actually, we have our next meeting on Thursday, the 16th. Um, we have our, our regular school committee meeting on the 23rd. She was wondering if we wanted to move to the 30th, um, given that, that the 31st is the deadline for the, um, submission of the various proposals, or if we wanted to stick to the 23rd and the 6th. So is there discussion about that? I mean, if we, if we do nothing, we're sticking to the 20, whatever date I just said. 23rd and the 6th. But is, if there is, if there is a desire from the committee to shift forward, um, the 30th is tricky for me personally, because we will be someplace where there's nominal internet connection, but that's neither here nor there. So, um, Mr. Hayner?
As I said before, I'd like to see even a rough draft of the proposals going forward. I'd like to have the opportunity to give any, some input into that, uh, not looking to make any dramatic changes and stuff, but just to react to it. I think it's important for us to have a chance to do that. And one day notice, if we're doing it on 30th, and it's supposed to be in on the 31st, my opinion. I'd, I'd like to stay with the 23rd.
Dr. Allison Ampi?
I would also like to stay with the 23rd for the same reasons that Mr. Hayner listed.
Any other discussion?
I concur.
All right, let's move on then. Um. Executive session. Right? Um, so to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations, uh, with union or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union or non-union, in which if held in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect, uh, conducting strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, which if held in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect, collective bargaining may also be conducted to discuss and approve the MOA for the AFL-CIO State Council 93, local 680 traffic supervisors. Um.
Second.
Did you have something, Ms. Nolan? Okay, we're just waving, okay, cool. I like, I like waving. Um, great. Oh, goodbye, that was it. Okay. So, uh, roll call, Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Allison Ampi?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
I'm also yes. Um, and our intention, um, is to come back from executive session. So, um. Sean, what are you, do we have a plan for that? Anybody? Karen?
I don't think we're gonna be very long, so.
There's no plan.
Sorry.
No, that's not a problem. So Sean, are, are you able to, should, do we wanna, we do want to come back, right, and do this? In public, so.
I mean, yeah.
Could we wait till the next meeting, or no?
You could, I mean, there's no, because it's the summer and they're not, you could wait, I mean, there, there wouldn't be any significant harm, um, because there's no, I mean, the contract will be implemented for the new school year.
Yeah, it's technically not on the agenda for the open meeting.
Oh.
Good point. We can do it first thing at the next meeting.
We will not be coming back.